Good afternoon. This is our regular meeting of November 16th. Welcome. It is 3:00 PM. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Matoye.
Here.
Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Ursaylu.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu.
Yes.
Community input on closed session items only. I do not see anyone in our audience to read, so Trustee Matoye, no need to read your introduction. We will now move into closed session. The items are 5A conference with legal counsel existing litigation, 5B conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, four cases. Three of the cases involve requests for transfer in lieu of the property tax payments to charter schools, 5C conference with labor negotiator, 5D public employee discipline dismissal, release employment, and 5E student discipline, two cases. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM, and we will recess into closed session now at 3:01. We're ready to begin our meeting. Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM, we will have opening ceremonies with a moment of reflection and pledge to the flag led by Trustee Barto. Please rise.
Trustee Anderson.
Trustee Anderson.
I'm sorry, Trustee Anderson.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Adoption of the minutes from 10:26:21. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the minutes from 10:21. A second?
Moved by Trustee Wagen, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu.
Introduction of new staff. Dr. Jacob.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I would like to introduce one of our newest school resource officers, Officer Andrew Shen, and he is one of the new SROs over at CDM. And just a little bit about Officer Shen. I should have noted this when I introduced myself to you, but he is a fellow Titan, which means he graduated from Cal State Fullerton.
That's correct.
Quite a few years after I did, but once a Titan, always a Titan. And he graduated with a BA in business administration and then was hired on by Newport Beach PD as a police recruit, and he graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy in 2014. He's worked as a patrol officer for six years, doing some peninsular enforcement team for two years, which was working with homelessness and safety in regards to beach use, the boardwalk, and one of the areas of expertise that we'll use probably is electric bikes, scooters, and skateboards. So he's also been trained in DUI detection, impaired driving, and trained in how to do critical incident debriefs, assisting fellow officers with crisis intervention, identifying signs of trauma and stress, which we know will come in helpful at our school site, and developing wellness programs for first responders. He's also trained in interview techniques and has gone through Behavior Analysis Training Institute. So it comes with a great deal of skills to our school district. And then personally, Officer Shen is married to his college sweetheart, and he's been married for nine years, and they have two children. They have Elliot and I don't know if it's Lana.
It is Lana.
Lana.
Yes.
So we'd like to welcome Officer Shen to our Newport Mesa family.
Well, thank you for having me, Superintendent Smith, and the trustees and all the members here at the Board. Anyone who's met me so far knows that I carry some passion for this career and for this job, and I carry that passion to this current assignment. I can guarantee you that when I take my passion with me, good work will come from it. My goal is, at the end of my assignment, when that day comes, that I'm going to leave the school and the district, the school district and the teachers and the community a better place than the first day when I started. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to our work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to personally thank Officer Shen for being here. We had, I would say, our cities, both our cities, hold the job of SRO very seriously and to very high standards. And I know when Officer Fabry was promoted to sergeant, it took a few weeks just because they were going through the interview process to find the right person. And having just interacted with you over the past few weeks, I think they did find an excellent person. All the good people though keep getting promoted, so we're hoping you stay with us a while in this position. But thank you for being here tonight, too. Okay, and now we're moving on to some other great recognition. Dr. Smith, would you like to take this?
Yeah, we're going to let.
You were there.
We are.
Microphone.
We're going to let John Drake start us off and introduce the items, and then I'm going to provide color commentary, having been there with this amazing team.
We're seeing if we can tandem the Monday Night Football broadcast in the future, possibly. Anyhow, it really is humbling for me to be able to introduce both of these items, A and B, because they go together. And the first one is the National Recognition for the Blue Ribbon School, which is Maude Davis Elementary School. I want to give you a little background of the National Blue Ribbon Schools program. It recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing the achievement gap among students and their subgroups of the schools. Every year in the United States, the Department of Education celebrates schools demonstrating that all students can achieve at high levels. Now, the National Blue Ribbon is in its 39th year, and this year it bestowed nationally, this is pretty incredible, 325 schools, which sounds like a lot, but when you think of the number of elementary, middle, and high schools in the United States, it is an elite few. And it is my honor to share with all of you, and I'm going to ask Principal Flores to come up in a minute or two, but my honor really to introduce to all of you our National Blue Ribbon School, Maude Davis Elementary School. As a side note, we have had about five other schools in the district, but it has been since 2007 since any of our schools have been noted as a, recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School. The nomination category that Davis received this award in and earned this award in is exemplary achievement gap of closing schools. So congratulations to Davis Elementary School on that. Now, in tandem with that, we know that schools only receive this recognition both through a nomination but also through incredible leadership. And that is for sure what is in place at Davis under the guidance of Principal Flores, who I'll call up in just a minute. But as part of the process, there's an award called the Terrell H. Bell Award, which recognizes outstanding school leaders and the vital role they play in guiding students and schools in excellence frequently under challenging circumstances. Terrell H. Bell exemplified educational leadership as a teacher, a principal, a superintendent, a state commissioner of education, the commissioner of education under Presidents Nixon and Ford, and ultimately the secretary of education under President Reagan. He was a firm believer that education is a powerful and liberating force in people's lives. Principals chosen for this award and recipients have transformed their schools. Principals are nominated by their school communities during the final stages of the National Blue Ribbon application. And the U.S. Department of Education, together with the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the Association for Middle Level Education, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals bestows the Bell Award on a handful of principals each year. It's absolutely humbling and an honor to be able to let you all know that Principal Christie Flores has received this award.
Christie, I just wanted to add, I got to go on the trip, and it was great in that I could just celebrate and learn from you, the team, and the history of that great school, because I've only been here four weeks, so I could take no credit for it. So there was no gloating on my behalf. I was learning. And I heard a story about a school where parents got involved and said, "This is our vision. This is what we feel are our needs." A group of teachers that said, "We're interested in this topic," and who every day demonstrate their commitment to those students who are problem solvers. I heard your story from them, that you were one of them, one of the teachers to start this school, and because you were such a great teacher and a great leader, you were absolutely the right choice. Now we say being a prophet in your homeland is one of the hardest things to do, and so that impressed me. Folks may not know this, but there are 325 schools being recognized, eight principals. So to say they go in tandem, certainly great schools are great in part because they have great leadership, but they're not all as great as you, right? Of the 325, only eight of you were recognized, and they were on a panel during this activity. And the principals shared a lot of things you would hear from well-researched, successful principals. And it got to you, and you shared the story, I think, of your grandfather, who was a leader in education, and that was your example, and that's what set you on this course, and that's what inspired you. You shared your why. You were the only person on that panel to do that, and I just thought that was the most touching, most memorable part of that activity. And not to bring it down to a bit of a humorous level, but for those of you that watched the stream, just know that Christie and Lisa, they had this dance choreographed, because they were playing a lot of hip-hop music. They call you on, you're supposed to dance, I think there's going to be a moonwalk and something else, and then they got to punk rock music for us. And it just didn't work with the, you know, the moonwalk, and so we had to add lib. And so for those of you that were concerned about the dance moves, just know that we had a better plan in place. But Christie, it was an honor to hear your story, the story of Maude Davis Elementary, and to meet your husband, Chris, who's here tonight. So thank you on behalf of the Board and the Superintendency for everything you and your dedicated staff do every day.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, President Yelsey, trustees, executive cabinet, thank you for the support and opportunity to celebrate with our Newport Mesa community tonight. The past few years, as a Davis Magnet School community, we have adopted school-wide themes, helping children and adults alike to develop our growth mindset, demonstrate empathy, build resilience, and this year to simply share joy. With joy comes gratitude, so please bear with me for a few minutes, as I am full of so much joy and gratitude, as I have the honor to represent my beloved Davis Magnet School as one of 325 schools to receive the National Blue Ribbon and as one of eight principals to receive the Terrell H. Bell Leadership Award. I have been fortunate to be a part of Davis Magnet School community for 13 years, three and a half as a classroom teacher and nine and a half as a principal. Since the beginning, our team has been collaborative, supportive, selfless, and dedicated to doing whatever it takes to support students academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally. Receiving national recognition as one of 325 schools, which includes elementary, middle, high school, both public and private, did not occur overnight, nor is it the result of one person or a few people. Our success has built over time, with a strong, committed team working together for the betterment of all of our students. At Davis Magnet School, we are constantly striving to make a difference in the lives of our students and to be better each day. Although our test scores were the initial invitation to apply, this award included an in-depth application that was submitted during the spring of 2021. Anything done well is done as a team. Thankfully, several teachers volunteered to serve on our application committee during the most busiest time of year for any teacher, when report cards are due and leading up to parent-teacher conferences. The teachers who joined me on our application committee consisted of kindergarten teacher Daniela Ramos, first-grade teacher Jolfa Dormitorio, second-grade teacher Danielle Lopez, third-grade teacher Doreen Ross, fifth-grade teacher Katie Danahue, and sixth-grade teacher Lisa Holman. Our team met at least once a week for five weeks to complete multiple sections describing various aspects of our school, including academic supports, curriculum and instruction, school climate and culture, strategies for engaging students and families, professional culture, school leadership, and cultural responsiveness. I can imagine the application to be challenging during a typical year, but the 2021 application required specific examples of pre-pandemic, as well as modifications made to continue our outstanding work during a global pandemic. To say the least, I am beyond proud of our Davis team. None of this would be possible without the strong, positive school culture that is the foundation of Davis Magnet School's success. This is accomplished through trust, consistent communication, and dedicated relationships among our staff, students, and families, with the ultimate goal of empowering our students to thrive. The teachers and staff at Davis are dedicated, innovative, collaborative, hardworking, flexible, and care deeply about the students, families, and one another. Each member of the team is there to help and to make a positive difference in the lives of our students. I try to tell them daily how much I appreciate their hard work and dedication, and I will gladly do it publicly here tonight. Thank you, Davis teachers and staff, for all you do. Our jobs are made easier thanks to the support of our dedicated families all across our community. With a devoted PTA and foundation who lead without egos and personal agendas, our parent community works collaboratively with one another and our Davis staff. I am so grateful for the ongoing support and their trust in us with their children's education. Several of those are here today. The Davis students have experienced so much change and adversity, just like all of our students across our district and nation. They show up to work, learn, and grow. Our students are kind, curious, and creative. They are full of potential, and I appreciate their hard work and dedication to grow as scholars and humans who are already making a positive difference in their communities. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support of our school and community, not just now but over the past 13 years. Dr. Smith, thank you for your time, enthusiasm, and support, and willing to pivot on our dance moves. You were only a matter of days into your job when you had to pack up and travel to DC. Your presence meant so much to our team and to me. It was such a pleasure getting to know you, and I am so grateful you are Newport Mesa. We are fortunate to have you here. Our school received this beautiful plaque that will be housed in the trophy case in our front office. We are waiting for the arrival of a large flag that will proudly hang in the front of our school near our new mural that was recently painted by Costa Mesa artist Mike Howard of Operation Clean Slate. Now, I will tell you that Davis Magnet School's National Blue Ribbon recognition is much easier for me to talk about than the recognition as one of eight principals nationally to receive the Terrell H. Bell Outstanding Leadership Award. Although my name is listed on the Leadership Award, I did not achieve the success alone. It began with my parents, who instilled an understanding of the importance of education, helping others, and instilling the drive to be a little bit better each day. It included my grandfather, who led by example as principal of the year for the state of Kansas. It is the result of many teachers, coaches, and mentors over the years guiding, encouraging, and challenging me to be better. I have also grown as a leader because of the leaders I am surrounded by. I have the utmost respect for my fellow principal colleagues, and I am full of gratitude for the coordinators and directors who do so much to support us all, especially through the most stressful and challenging of times. I learn from them daily and depend on their wisdom, experience, and support. I am grateful to our district leadership of our assistant superintendents for their continued support and trust. Thank you for the opportunity to lead Newport Mesa's only magnet school. It is a responsibility that I do not take lightly. While I have been fortunate to work with a large collaborative team over the years, there were a few individuals who contributed significant time and efforts to the Leadership Award application that made this possible. First-grade teacher Jolfa Dormitorio, fourth-grade teacher Kelly Galen, fifth-grade teacher Katie Danahue, sixth-grade teacher Emily Matthews, speech and language pathologist Lori McIntosh, school psychologist Carly Caningsfield, along with Davis parents Alex DeKia, Becca Friedland, Taylor Effelman, and Jennifer Friend Smith, along with our former superintendent Russell Lee Sung. They all contributed to the required application letters with sixth-grade teacher Lisa Holman serving as editor-in-chief. Thank you, team, for your support then, now, and always. Finally, the foundation of my team starts at home with my husband, Chris, along with our two kiddos, Isabel and Isaiah. Chris is a dedicated Newport Mesa teacher and a proud member of the Costa Mesa High School teaching staff. He is my best friend and biggest cheerleader, who is extremely patient with my schedule, crazy ideas, and drive to do things a certain way. I could not do what I do and how I do it without his support. We have two children who attend schools in Newport Mesa, and they are my everything. Our family is blessed to have a wonderful support system, including my parents, Tim and Debbie McCune, and Chris's parents, Steve and Catalina Flores. I am humbled, proud, and grateful for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. Thank you for the time to be able to share joy and gratitude. It is truly an honor. In addition to the plaque that I brought with me, I also came bearing a couple of gifts. So, Dr. Smith, inside this box, you will find a blue ribbon pin, as you are now the superintendent of now six National Blue Ribbon schools, so you can wear that proudly. And then I also came bearing this letter from the White House that can be housed here at the district office and just demonstrating that success can even be achieved during the most challenging of times. So with enormous gratitude and joy, I give these to you. Thank you for the time.
Christie, we can't compete with these awards you've received in Washington, DC, but we do have some certificates, and we know you have a lot of staff and your family here, so we'd like to invite them up, maybe with your family first and have all the staff come up to take a picture. So we do have some certificates.
Staff? All those people that you were saying were so wonderful. Come on, wonderful people. Staff, PTA, staff, families, part of the Davis, all the Davis ducks that are here. You. Madria, you should be in this. I'm not a staff. You guys sent them all, the whole family? No, not yet. I'm not on cable. I just went back. Wait, there's more. There's always more. Okay. I understand there's parents who have children in this school, but you would all send them. Because we're parents. Parents? She's a mom. She's a mom. Oh, wait. Karen, board, and Christie. Come on. A board. Should we stand so that Leah gets her face in there? She's had to do all sorts of stuff.
people who left, they may do so.
Good stuff.
Yes, that is very, very exciting.
I like good stuff.
Good beginning. Okay, next, we will move on to item 13.
Even more good stuff.
Our student board member reports. We have three students here tonight from Corona Del Mar High School, Back Bay High School, and Early College High School. And our roll call vote will be taken by Katie Barnes from Corona Del Mar High School. So we will start with Katie. Would you like to come present?
Hello, members of the Board, President Yelsey and Superintendent. I am honored to be here this evening. We were asked to address how our school is building communities and connections this year and the return to normalcy. I want to report that Corona Del Mar High School is doing a great job with student and staff bonding and engagement. A positive outcome is our spirit. CDM is continuing to show awesome student support and attendance at games. We had our Battle the Bay Dance. Unity, and Diversity Club, Garden Club, and Med Club. I can definitely say that students are coming together to do the things that they love. Along with this, we have our traditional house competition assemblies, which brings all of us together, and a lot of house pride. I know people can get really passionate and determined for their house. We also have various Spirit Weeks. This week is Kindness Week, and we've done various activities such as post-it notes, positive little messages on our desks. And we also have a "Take What You Can and Give What You Need," just little messages that we have around our school, and lots of positive posters to promote Kindness Week. And for example, on Friday, we have Fun Fridays, which the staff brings out fun activities like a ping-pong table or Connect Four, and during breaks, I always see students playing and engaging with each other at that. And additionally, we don't have like a band at our school, but I've noticed that some of the kids that like music, including myself, we've actually brought our own instruments in the NPR to play during our breaks, and it's just another example of how the students are coming together to do the things that they love. So on behalf of Early College, I think we're doing very well, and thank you.
And I have to say, Nicole, it was great for five of our board members who were at your school today for the college.
Senior lunch.
Introduction. And it was great to see every individual student's picture went up with the colleges they've applied to. Some were one or two, some were like 20 that they've applied to. So it was very impressive. Every student at that school has applied to a college or to the Marines or Air Force. So that was very exciting.
And the amazing emcee, Dr. Martinez.
Yes.
It's amazing to see your love for your students every single time. It blows me away.
Next, we'll move on to Harbor Council PTA report, Ms. Bowler.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Yelsey, cabinet, executive, or board members, executive cabinet, and guests. I am pleased to announce that all of our 26, no, 25 PTA units are all in good standing. They've all paid their insurance, and they all have memberships, so hooray. So, and they're, hopefully, they've done their taxes, but if not, they will be done shortly. I want to thank Todd Hatfield and Annalise Dewey from Nutrition Services. They came to our PTA meeting last Monday and just gave us such a rundown on how the whole food supply chain works, how they have to order so long in advance, and we've all seen those ships out there in the harbor. Some of that stuff that we need is still sitting out there. And so he explained all that and then told us about the food and how the SAC lunches are going away, and they're coming back with, I think they called it bulk meals or bulk servings, which kind of is a little off-putting when you hear it that way, but when he described what it was, it was macaroni and cheese, or it was rigatoni. And they brought samples. And the PTA presidents and those of us there got to sample the food that our kids will be eating, and it was very good. And I was really impressed, and he was there to answer any questions that our PTA presidents had for him, and they were able to explain it, and it was fabulous. And our other speaker was talking on the mental health and wellness of our kids, which is just as important as their learning. And so we had Kristen Henry, the wellness coordinator, along with, she brought with her Heather Krikorian, who's a behavioral specialist, Clarissa Cunningham, and Eduardo Castillo, who are two of the new counselors for the elementaries, and then Jessica DeWilde, who's a social worker. And they gave little rundowns on what their jobs are and what they're doing for our kids, and that was really enlightening and great to hear. And then our special guest was Dr. Smith, and we all got to meet him, and he endured all the questions and gave the answers and told us what was happening. And it was a really great meeting, full of information that hopefully made it back to the schools, parents, and all, but we were very impressed with what was going on behind the scenes from people that we normally don't see about or hear much about. So I just want to make sure that you guys realize what a great job they're doing and how much we appreciate it. And then I'd just like to take a moment to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe vacation with our long weekend, and we will see you in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Saunders from CSEA.
Good evening, President Yelsey, board, superintendent, Dr. West Smith, cabinet, and guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. CSEA wants to ensure that classified member needs and concerns will continue to be addressed amid ever-changing guidelines and following all the rules from all agency. CSEA is looking forward to ample notification and collaboration regarding any workplace changes. Our members are doing a great job and continue to support students and district needs no matter the circumstances. We appreciate the recent communication regarding the MOU for the Summer Assistance Program. We look forward to having our meeting this week. Thank you in advance for your consideration and time on this action. We would like to give our warmest thanks to all of our classified employees for their commitment and dedication. We would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please continue to follow COVID protocols. Again, thank you for this opportunity, CSEA Chapter 18. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Awadore.
I like their new sign. I like, I like your new sign.
Thank you. Good evening, President Yelsey, board members, superintendent Smith, and cabinet members. Tonight, I want to talk about the concerns we are hearing from teachers and specialists regarding the lack of sub-coverage. We're glad to hear that the pay rate for substitute teachers is being increased. We know the sub-s shortage is a serious problem and not limited to our district alone. It is our understanding from recent conversations with HR that substitute orientations are occurring at an expedited and ongoing basis, and that there has been an increased effort and resources utilized to fill the employment gaps in this area. All of this is very much appreciated. Nonetheless, it's important that NMFT convey to you what we are hearing from people regarding the shortage as it affects them. Teachers are regularly, I'm going somewhere with this, just trying to remember. Teachers are regularly experiencing increased workload due to the shortages. Specialists are scrambling to arrange coverage and meeting compliance issues for lack of instructional aids. TOSSs are being impacted, often called away from their primary duties, including supporting classroom teachers. It's become increasingly difficult for sites operationally with fewer substitutes and fewer hands on deck to fulfill positions such as intervention, teachers, and instructional aids. The shortage of behavioral specialists is impacting SDC classes particularly hard. As you visit your sites, particularly in elementary where the sub-s shortage is having impact, an intense impact due to the structure of the elementary day, remember how much teachers are doing to navigate the shortages at their site. Ask the teachers how they're doing. You might notice what we're noticing, some discrepancies in school climates that are worth heading off at the pass, because during these times, it will pay off exponentially to make certain that people feel valued, appreciated, and heard. I want to remind administrators tonight that might be listening to listen to your staff as they bring forward concerns related to their workload and working conditions, and to please be as responsive as possible. NMFT gets no pleasure from fielding calls from particular sites with a higher-than-average number of people that are feeling over-anxious, overstressed, and like every iota of spare reserve is being squeezed from them. With over 30 schools, of course, we notice patterns, but this isn't a gotcha, it's an ask. It will benefit us all in the end, I'm sure of that. Taking the pulse of the well-being of groups of employees, prioritizing and making judgments on how to best lead a site's workforce through the third year of a pandemic, introspecting continually to check and recheck your perceived effect on people as a manager. These are not skills that are necessarily taught, nor are they contractual items, but these things need attention and upkeep, too. Trustees, thank you for consistently emphasizing the importance of employee well-being. That is so important now because teachers and service providers are experiencing more stress earlier than usual. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to community input on non-agendized items. Trustee Matoye.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Okay, what I'd like to ask the board, if it's okay, to get more comments in, because we have this item on our agenda later in our meeting, is to increase to 30 minutes today, but limit to two minutes per comment, so we can get in most of the comments from the cards I received. Is that okay?
Yep.
Yes. Do we need to vote, or?
I'll just say thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
Thumbs up from Leah.
Okay, I, I will call three names at a time, so you'll know who you follow. That way, we can get moving through quicker to get as many as we can in in 30 minutes.
President Yelsey, are we doing it by topic?
I am doing it by the order that they came in.
Okay.
Okay. Karen Bates, Elise Chousid, and Evelyn Vest. Karen.
Thank you. Natural immunity is science, just not the revenue-generating kind. It is so clear to most of us in this room that this is not about a virus. This is about freedom. In November 2020, the vaccine passport was being called a conspiracy theory. So was no jab, no entry, no jab, no job, no jab, no travel. Today, they are all a reality. You can call us conspiracy theorists, anti-vaxxers, COVID idiots, whatever you like, but you are mocking the very people who have correctly predicted every step of this scam with 100% accuracy. Do you know what is happening in Austria today? They are imposing lockdowns on the unvaccinated. Is this the Fourth Reich? This is Nazi Germany all over again, and it is right here in front of us. Do you not see what is happening in our world? This is unconstitutional, anti-freedom, and anti-American. These vaccines are killing and paralyzing children, and you want to accept the governor's mandate in January or July? You will have blood on your hands for a vaccine that doesn't even prevent or diminish the transmission of any disease, a vaccine that has no long-term safety or efficacy studies. This is absolutely ludicrous, and they are stealing our freedoms, and you are letting them. People are waking up to the evil that is taking place in this nation. This is a plot to take away our freedoms, the freedoms that we fought for, and to replace them with democratic socialism, communism, it's all the same thing, and it is designed to take away from the top, from the people, and give to a small minority of people at the top and make you subjects. This is designed to make you serfs and to stay in your place, to do what you are told, ask no questions, live with less, and be happy with it. Mayor de Blasio in New York is trying to take away the ability to own homes and land. If you don't think that you will be here next, you are a fool. I urge you all to attend as many government meetings, school board meetings, and make your voices heard. You have to be able to make sacrifices, not comply, to protect the way of life that you have enjoyed all of your life, if not for yourself, for your children, and your grandchildren.
You are taking time away from other people who want to speak.
And rights from healthy people. We must stand up and fight this.
If you go over the time limit, it takes away, other people will not be able to speak at all, so just remember that. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Elise Chousid. I'm a mother of two boys in the district. Firstly, I wanted to thank Krista Wigan for her Instagram post today acknowledging the voices of those parents advocating for their children at this time. Secondly, I wanted to thank the board for not going the way of San Diego and LA Unified. While many parents appreciate this, we also believe that this is not enough at this time. I stand here tonight to urge you to advocate for our children by writing Governor Newsom in opposition to the impending vaccine mandate. Last board meeting, the superintendent told us essentially that our voices were falling on deaf ears because the people we really need to reach were in Sacramento. This "our hands are tied" jargon and kicking the can down the sidewalk is just plain and simply not good enough. We have seen a few districts go so far as saying they will not comply with Newsom's mandate, and others are writing to let him know the immense harm that these mandates will do to our communities and schools. Many families will opt to homeschool, and teachers will lose their job because of it. Many students also may become vaccine-injured if this mandate goes through. Do you want an injured child on your conscience? Anyone who says these vaccines are safe and effective is not being completely honest because there is no way of knowing without longitudinal data and larger studies. There have not been enough children studied to make the assertion with only 2,000 kids in the 5-11 Pfizer study. In the words of a member of the FDA advisory panel, "We will not know the safety of these vaccines until we start using them." I, for one, find this statement completely unacceptable when my child has a statistically 0.0 chance of dying from COVID. The greater-good argument for this mandate is moot because non-sterilizing vaccines do not prevent infection or transmission, therefore, they do not contribute to herd immunity. Any society that uses its children to shield adults who can take care of themselves has lost its moral way. So in closing, I urge you to write Newsom in opposition of these mandates. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Evelyn Vest.
This is a plot to take away our freedoms, the freedoms that we fought for, and to replace them with democratic socialism, communism, it's all the same thing. And it is designed to take away from the top, from the people, and give to a small minority of people at the top, and make you subjects. This is designed to make you serfs and to stay in your place, to do what you are told, ask no questions, live with less, and be happy with it. Mayor de Blasio in New York is trying to take away the ability to own homes and land. If you don't think that you will be here next, you are a fool. I urge you all to attend as many government meetings, school board meetings, and make your voices heard. You have to be able to make sacrifices, not comply, to protect the way of life that you have enjoyed all of your life, if not for yourself, for your children and your grandchildren.
You are taking time away from other people who want to speak. Thank you.
We must stand up and fight this.
If you go over the time limit, it takes away, other people will not be able to speak at all, so just remember that. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Elise Chousid. I'm a mother of two boys in the district. Firstly, I wanted to thank Krista Weigand for her Instagram post today acknowledging the voices of those parents advocating for their children at this time. Secondly, I wanted to thank the board for not going the way of San Diego and LA Unified. While many parents appreciate this, we also believe that this is not enough at this time. I stand here tonight to urge you to advocate for our children by writing Governor Newsom in opposition to the impending vaccine mandate. Last board meeting, the superintendent told us essentially that our voices were falling on deaf ears because the people we really need to reach were in Sacramento. This "our hands are tied" jargon and kicking the can down the sidewalk is just plain and simply not good enough. We have seen a few districts go so far as saying they will not comply with Newsom's mandate, and others are writing to let him know the immense harm that these mandates will do to our communities and schools. Many families will opt to homeschool, and teachers will lose their job because of it. Many students also may become vaccine-injured if this mandate goes through. Do you want an injured child on your conscience? Anyone who says these vaccines are safe and effective is not being completely honest because there is no way of knowing without longitudinal data and larger studies. There have not been enough children studied to make the assertion with only 2,000 kids in the 5-11 Pfizer study. In the words of a member of the FDA Advisory Panel, "We will not know the safety of these vaccines until we start using them." I, for one, find this statement completely unacceptable when my child has a statistically 0.0 chance of dying from COVID. The greater-good argument for this mandate is moot because non-sterilizing vaccines do not prevent, prevent infection or transmission, therefore, they do not contribute to herd immunity. Any society that uses its children to shield adults who can take care of themselves has lost its moral way. So in closing, I urge you to write Newsom in opposition of these mandates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, have you heard the expression "the buck stops here"? This board is obfuscating and shirking a clear leadership opportunity. Other boards, as mentioned and by the previous speaker in California, have already taken the stand, not on our watch, not our children, no. Do you know what's wrong with waiting for an edict from our king in Sacramento who has illegally seized power of the largest state in America? He will always make the wrong decision for our children. He will listen to those who have bribed him? We've seen this over and over. Prison guards, no vax. Five-year-olds, yep. To pretend we don't all see this is asinine. It's more than that, though. To pretend you don't see it now and buy your inaction, you are complicit. You are culpable. Not only do we require that you vote tonight to stand up to state that this board will not support, enforce, or comply with a mandate forcing children to be vaccinated to attend school in person, we also ask that you travel with us to Sacramento and to set up meetings with the appropriate audiences there. I will pay for your travel and lodging. If you don't commit to vote on both this, this evening, based on procedural technicalities despite the urgency, I am submitting this written request tonight to add this to the agenda for your next meeting on December 7th, or if you move it to December 14th. We are rooting for you to make the right decision tonight. Thank you.
The next three are Danielle Mills, Laurel Gregory, and Grace Hobbs.
Laurel.
Danielle.
Hi, my name's Danielle. Unmask our children. And before you sit there and say or think that you don't have a say on masking, there are other courageous school districts in the state who are standing up to these tyrannical guidelines and voting to not enforce, support, or comply. You do have a say. This is still America, and our kids have freedoms that neither the governor, an unelected bureaucrat, board in Sacramento, or you can take away. Stand up in the name of freedom and vote out these unconstitutional guidelines and mandates. They are not laws. You are not required to uphold, enforce, or support unconstitutional edicts. Take a stand for our kids and for freedom. If you are unwilling to do what is in the best interest of our children and give parents the power to choose what is best for their children, then step down. Make room for someone like me who isn't afraid to vote for freedom. Step down because we will not back down or go away. We're fighting for our kids, all kids. We are organized, and we are coming for your seats in next year's elections.
Can I just give you?
Laurel.
These handouts?
Hand it to... Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for hearing me tonight. Since you are entrusted to make decisions regarding the health and safety of approximately 19,000 students, I have a question for you all. Where are your masks? Number one, let's consider a few possible reasons you are unmasked. Number one, you're vaccinated. Number two, you're COVID-recovered with natural immunity. Number three, you have a medical reason that precludes you from wearing a mask. Number four, you've done your due diligence prior to enforcing this illegal mandate on our children and are now informed regarding the medical facts and studies showing the ineffectiveness and dangers of masks, and know they don't work, but you're afraid to stand up for our children. Regardless of your reasons, it's good news for us all. If it's reason number one, you're vaccinated, you believe you're protected, hence any child who chooses to be vaccinated need not wear a mask, nor do those around them because the shot protects them. Reason number two, you have natural immunity, now proven to be, to provide long-lasting, durable protection from all strains of COVID in equal or better measure than the COVID-19 EAU shots. Hence, any COVID-recovered children need not wear a mask or get the EAU shot, for that matter. Reason number three, medical exemptions are acceptable, hence any child with a medical exemption need not wear a mask. Reason number four, masks have proven to be ineffective and harmful, hence our children should not wear a mask. Based on your behavioral model, it stands to reason that no child need wear a mask since adults, a higher-risk group, choose not to wear masks, and our children have stronger immunity and are less likely than adults to spread, contract, be hospitalized, or die from COVID, unless you are asking us to all suspend our logic and common sense by pretending that this insane double standard is not driven by financial incentive or apathy. Reason number five, financial incentive, that speaks for itself. If you have no logic or fact-based explanation for forcing masks on our children, you do not practice your mandate, you do not practice what you mandate for our children. Tragically, there is only one explanation: you've been bought. Your only response, our goal is to keep the children safe and the schools open. Your actions clearly contradict your support of the mask mandate, so one can only conclude that it is either apathy or financial incentive, so please admit you're either truly do not care if our children are harmed, or you have chosen money over our children. But by all means, stop behind, stop hiding behind the safety of our children. Our schools can be open sans masks. This illegal mandate is just the beginning.
Hello. I want to share some local news with you guys, or some news in general, just because we feel like as your constituents, you guys are living on a different planet than we are, so we want to share some news, some information with you guys. First piece of news is the CDC conceded in the last week that there's no evidence of the natural immune-spreading COVID, yet they say the vax can spread COVID to others. Information came out this week that the Fifth Circuit Court rejected the OSHA vax mandate, so no private business is legally required to force employees to vax against their will. So that was good. That happened this week. As of November 11th, Orange County has had an average of 72 daily cases, of which, on average, two have been hospitalized. So that's really awesome information that's come out of Orange County this week. So not, not very many people are getting COVID, so that's really great. But the best news for you guys this week is Judge Freeland in San Diego, San Diego State Judge, has ruled masking schoolchildren is a choice of the schools and the school district. Since, since the Newsom administration only set forth guidelines, you guys and our schools get to decide whether our children are masked at school. So we shared this information with the principal from Costa Mesa High that was here earlier. He's super excited about it. So we want everybody to know that in this room. We want our children to have the masks removed off their faces, or wear them if they want to, but this needs to be done, this needs to be over with. Other districts, other places have chosen to remove the masks. The masks need to go, you guys. This is done, this needs to be over with.
Okay, the next three are Haley Jenkins, Anne Pelosi, and Angela Hartz. Haley.
Hello, Superintendent Smith and members of the board. I've been up here many, many, many times to discuss the ADL anti-bias trainings, as well as the UCI Racial Healing Program with you. I'm sure you're sick of me. I'm sick of taking family time away to come here and waste my breath, but I'm going to keep fighting this because this affects our children and it's important. So let's talk a bit more about this upcoming UCI Diversity, Inclusion, and Racial Healing Ambassador Program. Quite a mouthful of buzzwords. We've all been assured by you, Superintendent Smith, as well as the last superintendent, that there is no critical race theory being taught or promoted in the district. Again, I have to ask, have any of you seen all the materials, I'm sick of asking this, related to this training? Superintendent Smith, I know that you have not. My guess is that Krista and Leah have not. You do all understand that knowing exactly what the district is promoting is very important, right? Superintendent Smith, I've provided you with a copy of both the high school version of the program and the college version. Both of these programs are run by a lady named Teresa Neighbors, and I know some of you are familiar with her. She's the one you guys paid $45,000 to, that's a lot of money, in order to consult on all these woke training programs. So let's read from the UCI version of this program. "The topics include psychological approaches to racial identity formation and structural approaches to race such as critical race theory, differential racialization, intersectionality, anti-blackness, and white privilege. A large part of this program is to apply and pass on knowledge and experience. Therefore, the year after completing this, students serve as mentors in the high school program." So now, let's read from the high school version. "UCI sought to build a program for high school students that would unearth and jettison the deeply held and often unconscious beliefs created by racism, primarily a belief in the hierarchy of human value." That is so weird because this sounds just like something I've been assured has not been taught to our students. Parents have asked to see these materials, and we've been denied. We've asked you to explain this, we've been denied, and we've asked you, when is this program going on? And you have chosen not to answer this. It actually starts on Thursday, so I urge you to look into this and stop it. This is not okay. You've been lying to us, you've been not clear at all, and we, we just, we do not wish this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you for listening. It is unlawful to use coercion with this experimental COVID-19 vaccine in order for kids to go to school, to play sports, and simply live a normal life. The Nuremberg Code, adopted into US federal law, prohibits forcing or coercing anyone under any circumstances to participate in a medical experiment. And the code states, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential." COVID-19 vaccines are still in Phase III clinical trials until 2023 to '24, and hence qualify as medical experiments. People taking these treatments are test subjects. Most vaccines are trialed for at least five to 10 years, but COVID-19 vaccines have been in trials for less than one year. Previously-attempted coronavirus vaccines, i.e. MERS, SARS-1, were never approved due to antibody-dependent enhancement resulting in severe illness and deaths in animals. Numerous doctors, scientists, and vaccine experts are issuing dire warnings about the short and long-term effects of the COVID vaccines, including but not limited to death, infertility, miscarriages, Bell's palsy, blood clots, cancer, inflammatory conditions, autoimmune disease, early-onset dementia, convulsions, anaphylaxis, myocarditis, and antibody-dependent enhancement, leading to death. Why are these being, why are they being silenced? Children and youth are virtually at no risk of dying from COVID or transmitting it to others, but deaths and injuries to our youth have already occurred in the vaccine clinical trials. There have been more deaths from COVID vaccines this year than in the last 10 years from all vaccines combined. The trials have not proven that COVID vaccines prevent infection or transmission. Safe and effective treatments and preventative measures exist, like ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, and these should be the priority.
Hello, my name is Angela Haru. I think my writing was unclear. I have three children. One is in Newport-Mason Unified School District School, and two will hopefully be when they're of age. Thank you for letting me speak today. On September 20th, the district's website stated, and it still states today, that the district was finalizing a COVID screening process for volunteers, which coincided with implementation of the employee screening process. But part of that, it was that it was to show proof of vaccination or get a negative COVID test on a weekly basis. When that volunteer policy was released last week, a negative COVID test was not listed as an option, and only parents who are considered fully vaccinated can volunteer. I am here to request that a negative COVID test be allowed as an alternative to proof of the COVID vaccine. The COVID vaccine is too new to be mandated, as there have been no studies on long-term side effects. The vaccine also does not prevent transmission. Therefore, a COVID-positive parent, in spite of being vaccinated, could be allowed in the classroom, while a COVID-negative parent would not be. Allowing a negative COVID test as an alternative, which is in line with the employee screening process, would minimize the risk of having COVID-positive parents in the classroom, and would allow all parents to volunteer if they so choose. I am requesting that the policy be revisited and revised. I don't really know how to get that on the agenda if I had to put a written request in, so maybe I will email tomorrow to figure out how to do that. But I think it needs to be revisited and revised, negative COVID instead, or as an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Carla Rivera, Chelsea Geofor, and Amy Peters.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say, I have nothing prepared, so I apologize. I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm very grateful for all of you to do everything that you do and all the effort you have exerted to open up our schools, so I thank you for that. Our kids really need to be social, and I've seen the effect not only on my son, but on all of my girlfriend's children. The kids are really depressed right now, and it's not a good thing. This COVID situation has really traumatized so many of our kids and adults. You see everybody fighting, you see everybody divided. What is going on? When we, when we pledge allegiance to the flag and we say, you know, "Our country, under God, indivisible," what does that mean exactly? Where is God in this picture? Have we forgotten how divine we are, that we have natural immune, immunity to many things? We have an amazing immune system. Are we taking care of it? Are we respecting it? Are we taking care of our temple? Why do we have to feel responsible for other people's health? Every individual, excuse me, every individual, every individual should be responsible for their own health by eating the right foods, by, by thinking good thoughts, by watching what they're, you know, not watching too many horrible things on TV. So I want to bring that part of it to this conversation. Where is the soul? And is there a way to connect back to the natural state of humanity? Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. About a year and a half ago, my husband, my family and I sought out this particular district to choose a home after 18 years in New York City. And we love Newport Coast Elementary, we love our teachers.
Chelsea, could you hold the microphone a little closer to you?
We love our teachers. We, we'd love Newport Coast Elementary and our community. Unfortunately, I never thought I would be looking into private schools right now because I am in opposition of the mandate for every unique child. I believe that they, their parents should make the freedom of choice. Children have already been exposed to unprecedented amounts of fear, instability, shaming, psychological trauma, and segregation through COVID-19 measures. Students are at zero risk of contracting or transmitting this respiratory illness and are instead buffers to build others' immune systems. We know the survival rates are 99.997%. It is the job of the parents and legal guardians who know our children so well, not principals, teachers, governors, teachers assistants, school board executives, or any other adults who influence children to make medical decisions for them. Vaccine-compliant illicit under, from children under threat of coercion, bullying, or suspension, and who are not fully informed consent, that they have the legal right to refuse vaccination. This MNRA vaccination constitutes extreme bullying and coercion that should be constructed as battery, as well as violence of constitutionally protected rights. The engagement of medical experimentation without informed consent further constitutes the indictable offense of crimes against humanity. The risk associated with COVID-19 and MNRA is extremely dangerous to the health and well-being of all children, and this form of treatment is unnecessary. We hereby notify all staff, school board members, executives, and any other adults who may have access to our children while under their care. This includes the assistance of outside school staff, contractors such as public health nurses, health officials. You may be held personally incriminably liable for any injury or deaths that this may occur. Apologies for running over. Thank you.
Amy Peters.
Hi there. I've had kids in the district for the last...
a place like we are today, where promotion of fear is propaganda that our kids are exposed to every day. And people who spoke earlier were talking about the universal masking of our kids. Well, our kids are being masked because you took the ESAR funds. You took the $43 million to mask our kids. It says right here, "I filed a FOIA request for the district." How an LEA must, they have to implement this plan. How it will maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and others. Number A is universal and correct wearing of masks. B is modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing. C, handwashing and respiratory etiquette. D, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, which that is kind of scary on high school campuses. I don't think there's a clean bathroom on our high school campus right now. Contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine, in collaboration with health departments, diagnostic and screening testing, and efforts to provide vaccinations to school communities. You guys, these are all against the U.S. Constitution. I also have your oaths, which you swore an oath to the California Constitution and the U.S. Constitution. The Ninth and Tenth Amendments give the power to the people. We, the people, have the power. You don't get to decide the health for our children. You don't. And any vaccine injury is going to be on you, because the only people protected in this are pharmaceutical companies, not you. The district, if there are proven vaccine injuries from vaccines, from Costa Mesa High School, Newport Harbor, any of these high schools, you will be found liable. And I've warned you of this. So please, you need to do better.
Okay, we have time for one more comment. Michelle Erickson.
President Yelsey, I'd kindly like to ask for three minutes on this topic since it isn't very diverse from the ones that have come up already.
You're the last speaker, so.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michelle Erickson, and I am the PTA President of Victory Elementary with children in first and third grade. I'm here to inquire when a special study session will be scheduled to address the current state of T-Winkle electives. In the beginning of July this year, I inquired through several district staff about the exact elective offerings at the district middle schools. On July 9th, Dr. Bauermeister provided me with a spreadsheet of middle school electives, to which I then discovered the following information. Costa Mesa Middle School, 28 electives. Costa Mesa, Corona del Mar, 24. Enson, 16. T-Winkle, 11. At this point, T-Winkle was lacking in comparison to Enson. Drama, art, too. I believe art, one, has since been added. Spanish, human anatomy, and yoga. With the discovery of this information and inequities, I wrote the current board members and Dr. Torres expressing my concerns. On July 20th, President Yelsey, you indicated in an email the following. After we hire a new superintendent, I will request the board hold a special study session in the fall to develop new opportunities. On October 25th, I inquired to the board and Dr. Torres for an update. President Yelsey, you responded with, "Our new superintendent, Dr. Wes Smith, started in his new position one week ago. He is rapidly becoming familiarized with the concerns of the community and has been made aware of the offerings, and he will want to address this in a special study session. I will work with Dr. Smith to determine appropriate time to schedule." Our actions express our priorities. President Yelsey, is now an appropriate time to prioritize equitable education? If people that have been around this district for many years took this seriously, we would not be in this predicament in the first place. When at any point did anyone employed in this district find it acceptable that we don't have Spanish? Was it the demographics at this school? Do you recommend that if a student is in drama, art, Spanish, they should seek a district's transfer? Finally, when I have email conversations with people, all I hear are excuses. Where there is a will, there is a way. I do not think my children deserves anything less, or any other child, because of their address. I only request that children have received a fair and equitable education, and they do not have to transfer across town to receive it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone who did not get called to speak tonight, please email us, and we will read your comments. Thank you very much for all attending. Superintendent Smith, would you like to comment on any of the remarks?
Excuse me, we are in a meeting.
Yeah, no one has to leave.
No one has to leave. We have 20 minutes normally for comments. We extended it to 30 tonight. Okay, excuse me, we are continuing on with our meeting. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments about some of the things that came up, updates, if you will, and, you know, certainly be sensitive that in no way my tone represents other than the respect that the board has for the community. If there was concern last week, that, last week, seems like a week, last meeting, that I was intending to be condescending, it certainly wasn't my intent. So I apologize, and we'll watch that today and won't, you know, rehash anything that we've already mentioned. I did mention, though, that we certainly, the board has mentioned publicly, they respect and listen to, read the messages, care what you say. When the comment was made that I, well, let me first say this, I did too mention last week that it was courageous what parents are doing, and that public education fails when parents don't advocate for their students, and didn't mean that in a condescending way. That was an honest comment that I made, and I believe the board feels the same way. The comment that I said that it falls on deaf ears is respectfully inaccurate. It's not what I said. The board does listen. They've listened here. They read and respond to the messages. I don't know of as many boards, as I've done my work statewide, that listen and care this much. The point I was making, and you've already mentioned that, was about where those decisions are being made, and some of the parents mentioned that tonight, that they understand where the decisions are being made. So again, no reason to rehash that. I did just want to make sure to clarify that these are not deaf ears, that this board is listening. With regard to the, what I think is a request, and we addressed this last week, the board isn't agendizing topics about potential mandates, and they've said publicly that as soon as there is something for them to agendize, that they will. And that was mentioned last week. With regard to the masks, I would just clarify that the ESAR funds don't compel us to mask our students. The state mandate does, and we understand that there are folks who believe it's, you know, constitutionally inappropriate. I would say that the recent ruling, certainly our attorneys read it very, very differently, that in fact, it reaffirms that the state, that every district has to enforce the state mandate to mask. The second item was that how they enforce when students don't wear masks is where they said there is some flexibility, but not in enforcing the mask mandate. So we respectfully, again, read that legal decision differently. But I did want to clarify that it wasn't ESAR that makes that so. And then with regard to ADL, again, that's not the curriculum we taught. I hadn't been given curriculum, but certainly if that was passed up here, so I can read it, I'll take a look. We did have staff go through the training, and those staff also shared that curriculum with folks in the community that since then have, just as staff promised they would, had a chance to take a look at that, and the training will be for them. So I just wanted to clarify some of those things. And that completes my comments on this.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to community input on agendized items. We have, no, none? Okay. Okay, reports. Report on the Educator Effectiveness Plan. Ms. Torres?
Yes, this evening we have a presentation.
Excuse me, would you leave quietly? We are still conducting our meeting. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome up Vanessa Galey, who is going to present tonight on the Educator Effectiveness Plan. Our state has offered dollars to our school districts to be able to provide professional development to our educators.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and put up the presentation. I'm afraid I'm going to need to call Bob down. Or Rosie. Thank you so much, Rosie. President Yelsey, Dr. Smith, members of the board, cabinet, and members of the public. Tonight, we present to you the first presentation of the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Plan. The background on these funds is that they are intended to provide professional learning for a number of staff in our district, teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals who work with our students, as well as any classified staff who work directly with our students. The funds are available for five years, so through the 25, 26 school year. And so, honor before December 30th, we're supposed to develop and adopt a plan telling you how we intend to spend these Educator Effectiveness Funds. We will be presenting it at this public meeting, and then it has to be adopted at a subsequent meeting. So of the 10 allowable categories, Newport Mesa has chosen to focus on eight of them, and they include coaching and mentoring of staff, looking at programs that lead to effective standards-aligned instruction, thinking about ways for us to reengage students and lead to accelerated learning, really improving our student well-being, and addressing social, emotional, and mental health practices, leading to also looking at positive school climate, thinking about how to improve our inclusive practices, thinking about instruction and education to support our English learners, and lastly, early childhood education. And so, the districts throughout the state are encouraged to allow the school site and regular staff to identify topics of professional learning, and therefore Newport Mesa conducted some surveys. We asked for certificated staff, classified staff, as well as other administrators, to give us their ideas on initially, what are the highest levels of need and what are the areas of interest. And so, just to know that, these aren't the only funds devoted to providing professional learning for our staff. Educator Effectiveness is one funding stream. We have federal funds, and then also local funds devoted to these different topics. So through our survey process, beginning on the Professional Development Day, November 1st, it was a quick turnaround of three days, and we had a number of survey participants. We were very pleased with how many people participated for us. We had 439 elementary-certificated staff, and of them, 407 teachers. We had 296 secondary-certificated, of which 259 were teachers. And then of our classified staff, we had 228 participate, 85 of which are instructional assistants, and so we were very pleased for them to participate with us. The survey was put out by Ed Services, so that may have had some folks in our organization, especially on the classified staff side, say that maybe that wasn't for them. We did ask questions that were inclusive, but for this grant, the questions that we're looking at, the PD that we will serve, is particularly the classified staff who interact with our students. What we asked is about what training they would be interested in, as well as the formats. Could it be in-person, virtual? What might they attend, as well as might they attend after school or during the summertime? And so, this data will be used to guide our initial professional development, but also we know that over five years, circumstances will change, interests will change, and so we want to be flexible, and that's why we want to make sure that we're doing this annual outreach, and even more than annual, but at minimum annual. So some of the survey highlights, 311 of the 439 respondents said they'd be willing to come in the summertime, so we're very encouraged by that. 263 teachers said they'd be willing to come after school. And then, most teachers said they want to continue with a combination of both virtual and in-person professional development. So we want to be able to offer a range of supports, meeting people's needs. For secondary, same thing. We had quite a few people who would be willing to come in summer, not as many, but still a significant number willing to come after school and to attend our PD sessions. The reason why we ask these questions is we don't anticipate there being widespread subavailability for the foreseeable future. So we want to make sure we have many different kinds of formats available for our folks, so they can take advantage of professional development that meets their needs. For our classified staff, 200 of the 28 respondents were either interested or highly interested in job-specific training. And what that tells us is that everyone in our organization wants to do what they're doing and get better at their jobs, and we're very eager to start offering things that are really responsive to those needs. 168 were interested or highly interested in training on behavior management. We're really noticing with our students that they're challenged right now, and our classified staff are seeing it in every walk of life. And so there, we're interested in that topic, as well as 152 being interested in the social, emotional, learning aspect. So not something that everyone might have thought that our classified staff were interested in, but I think that's come up as one of the highlights. And so, of the 229 respondents, the majority would also be interested in a combination of in-person and virtual, followed by in-person and then the virtual. So in our district, our professional learning supports the whole child. Every plan we put forward, we emphasize the fact that we're looking at the academic behavior and social, emotional needs of our students, and so we want to make sure that we're putting that front and center in this work as well. It's ongoing. The grant will enable us to continue with a multi-year approach. We've already been doing professional learning. We aren't going to start now, we're going to continue, but this will help us expand and provide additional opportunities. And as we said earlier, the surveys will be conducted annually, so we can adjust the plan to meet current needs. So this is some secondary topics that we think rose to the surface based on the survey results, and also you'll see that the categories align to academics, behavior, and social, emotional learning. And then underneath those categories, we have the eight areas listed. Secondary, not all eight, obviously, early childhood ed doesn't apply here. So the effective standards-aligned education and coaching and mentoring staff, we really fell under the academics. And the number-one thing that secondary staff said they're interested in is eliciting and responding to student thinking. That has been a theme throughout our summer and our November training, and something that we really want to do to be responsive to the students. Again, looking at the years, you'll notice that the current school year is not included. We're taking this year as a planning year. We feel like everyone's got their hands full, and we want to really be prepared, and we want to be very thoughtful, and again, responsive to our teachers and our constituents. So although you can spend the money over five years, we're going to really plan on amping it up starting in '22, '23. That includes summer. You'll also see that there are some areas not boxed off. We're thinking that the instructional coaching and co-teaching may not be as much of an emphasis next year, but we heard loud and clear that people were really interested in the eliciting and responding. They're interested in content-specific training, they're interested in providing high-quality feedback. Now again, we plan to be flexible, and so this may adjust over time, but our areas of priority in secondary, we really felt like that was important, as well as behavior management and restorative practices, that also came up as an area of interest. Elementary and math, cognitively-guided instruction is something that a lot of teachers were asking about, as well as writing. In addition to that, visuals for students, and really, thinking maps has risen to the surface as something that the teachers... as something that the, the teachers were interested in knowing more about. And then over time, looking at engagement and feedback, including digital tools. Thinking about behavior management and positive behavior interventions, that is a very hot topic with our elementary teachers right now. And then thinking about social, emotional learning, ruler came up as the highest rated topic. Mindfulness and mental health also were important, but it seemed like perhaps we could focus on one thing and then continue to expand. With early childhood, we know with universal TK coming, that there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of support to be provided. And so we also felt like there's a lot of support we can provide in certification and training. And especially looking at the early literacy and numeracy skills. But then also thinking about our students' effective teacher-child interactions and meaningful play. So those are the things that rose to the surface, particularly from our early childhood and TKK teachers as they were responding to their levels of interest. So as we said earlier, the classified staff, this funding specifically addresses staff who interact with students. And so we also want to make sure that we're training our other staff. This pot of funds may not be devoted to the, to other groups, but we are also going, going to be looking at the ongoing professional development plan for folks who are both tied to students and not tied to students. And some of the things that our classified staff who work with students were interested in, we're thinking about strategies for working with small groups or working with students with unique needs, strategies to support the core instruction, and then of course, the other job-specific needs. And so some projections, and again, this will adjust over time as we get better, a better handle on how many people are able to participate in which formats and which content rises to the surface. So we, we broke it down fairly generically, thinking that there are these eight different areas. Thinking about four years of expenditures and phasing in. So another way that we were thinking about the budget was thinking about what is the stuff you would be doing. And so for instance, the staff development days, we already have paid for people to be here, but we'll need to have trainers and materials and keynote speakers. And this would be like in our August training days as well as November. With our leadership advance, knowing that our administrators need to do some learning as well, we thought about different aspects over the years that we would need to invest in those folks. And then we thought that probably our first big pass at summer training would be next year. And then over the years, it might subside a little bit. We're hoping to maintain interest in that area. And then after-school professional development, we looked at the number of people who said they'd be willing to come. And then we played it out on a range of how many days they said they'd be willing to come. And so this was about the mid-range. And so again, it'll adjust depending on how many people choose to participate. You'll see that we estimated sub-cost to be TBD next year. We're just not sure we want to bank on that. But we think over time, we'll be able to count on that model coming back. And then lastly, early childhood, you'll see that we think that will put this large initial investment and then it might wane a little bit over time. But again, looking at our needs, we would be able to adjust to make sure that we're supporting universal transitional kindergarten. We are required to support annual data reports. We have to do annual expenditure reports to say how many people participated, how many pieces were purchased, and that I believe is done by September 30th of each year. And then all of the funds not expended by June 30th of '26 have to be returned to the California Department of Ed. That won't happen. And then in terms of next steps, we will present the final plan. That will be up for your approval at the next board meeting. Just a note, typically the, the state does provide a required template. They have not done that this go-around, so, which is kind of nice. But we're going to be using one of our previous formats and we're going to try and keep it as short and simple as possible. And of course, we're going to continue to work collaboratively to begin the planning specifics so that we can make sure that everyone's in sync for summer and then launching into fall of '22 and beyond. Questions?
Ms. McTwain.
I know I did it right. Kind of throws you off. This is a standalone report. This is not part of the LCAP, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is a standalone report because this funding came out after the LCAP.
Do you think it might be?
We're looking at what would be the best approach. One of our, one option on the table is to park everything into the LCAP so you see it all together. The more plans that they create for us, the lengthier the LCAP will get. So we're trying to weigh the pros and cons of what all to put in there. But the, the plan will be available for everyone to review on our LCAP webpage.
And I wanted to thank you for giving us the numbers and the data, the actual numbers of how many teachers responded and the extra groups because that made it very clear. We know how difficult it is to get responses to surveys. We know how, we get, all get surveys, oh, please tell us how we're doing. Oh, so we all get that. But I think our teachers really understood that, and all staff, that this is important to respond to because they're going to come back. And I also want to thank you very much for including, informing us about the annual outreach because things do tweak and change. And that gives us the flexi, flexibility, I hate to use the pivot word, but it allows us to, to go with the flow and to, if something comes up, then we need to be able to move it. So thank you very much. It was an understandable report, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Justine Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. As always, very thorough.
Thank you.
I was thankful too that this was on the same agenda as the school plans for student achievement. And one thing that I noticed was missing from the elementary portion and the early childhood portion for this upcoming year is, are, is around literacy and phonics development. That's concerning to me, particularly for two schools that are in my zone. I was looking at some of the results and there's definitely a need for more push-in for two specific schools. And I saw in there it's proposed. So is there, is there any flexibility still? Or is there, because I, I think there are some schools that really had different experiences during COVID and attendance issues and all kinds of things that happened. So I would like to see, at some point, some addition to, particularly for two schools to have that for next year.
That's very understandable. And one of the things to point out is that this plan is supposed to interact with other funding streams. And so we do also have funding streams from Title II directly devoted to that, as well as some of our general funds supporting our, our early literacy and our phonics and phonemic awareness approaches.
Oh, well, that's good to hear. So for the, the years that follow, then what does that look like? What, what will that be covering?
Well, again, so the thinking here was that the educator effectiveness money might go toward other things that hadn't already been underway and funded under different funding sources. But we can continue to talk about the, the need. And if it needs to move into this funding stream, we can absolutely take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Justine Barto.
Yes, thank you. This is really excellent and exciting to see. I just had a question, which is the staff input surveys. How do we get the staff input? Was it through our, I'll, I'll let you speak on that and then I have a follow-up question.
We sent a good old-fashioned email. And we basically asked all of the, the professional development providers on that Monday to make sure that they asked the teachers to participate. And then we were very fortunate to have a, a good partner in NMFT to push out a final reminder to say, please don't forget to, to take the survey. And so we pushed it out through the district level and then through principals and then finally through our, our bargaining unit partners.
Is this, what kind of percentage do you think this represents?
I was afraid you were going to ask me that.
Sorry.
So of the approximately 630 elementary teachers, 407 participated. Of approximately 440 secondary teachers, 259 participated. And of 1,321 classified, 228 participated.
So that's not a bad percentage for an email marketing survey. I'm just going to show you right off the bat.
Yes, yes, we had a short window. And again, because it came from Ed Services and because this hasn't been our past practice at this time, we think that probably, we'll, we'll do better with classified. But we also feel like over years, as they see that we are being responsive and taking input and the, the survey's not the only way. But we are hoping that our numbers will go up and then also we'll have this great two-way communication in being responsive to requests for PD.
Well, we do have a lot of classified that this doesn't apply to at all.
Yeah.
So, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And then, yeah, so just, do you have any, like, and this is just me nerding out on my email marketing side. Do you have any ideas of what you might do for like greater participation? Or you, if you do this again, is it something you plan on, you said you plan on repeating it? So that's great because that builds that kind of, that trust to respond.
Right. Well, so in terms of a survey, I mean, I think it makes sense to do it at a certain time of year and to have it come out through certain key venues. So obviously, we have an ongoing relationship and speaking with our bargaining units and with our school staff to find out what are the best times of year. But again, I think that when people come to expect it and when they see that we're being responsive, I think that people will participate.
Thank you, it was a really great step. Thank you so much.
This is me.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick, a quick question. I noticed that there's a, NMUSD will submit an annual data report. So then will that be presented to the board at some point? Or is that, goes directly to the state? Just, just so we know, an output sort of?
That's a great question. So I haven't had experience with what reporting mechanism they're using with this.
Okay.
I, I would have to get back to you on what the, what the requirement is, as well as what the request is from you all.
Yeah, okay, great.
Any other questions? As always, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We love your enthusiasm for all of these types of reports.
Thank you very much. We're very eager to begin this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
19B, report on universal, universal.
Mike. Thank you.
Report on universal transitional kindergarten, Mr. Drake.
Yes, thank you, trustees and President Yelsey. As I call up our Director of Early Childhood Education, Kathleen Larry. She's walking up here. This is our first, hopefully, of a few opportunities for us to update you where we are in our planning for universal TK. Kathleen will go into much more detail in relation to that. As we know, we expand the, the age eligibility for TK next year by a couple of months. And we'll do so subsequent years up until 25, 26, when we will have four-year-olds in our TKs. So Kathleen?
Thank you. Good evening, President Yelsey, Superintendent Dr. Smith, Board, Executive Cabinet, and community members.
Angle your mic. You don't have to move, just move them, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is kind of a new setup since the last time I've been up here, so, sorry.
Got to keep you on your toes.
Today, I am just going to be giving you a brief overview just to give you some information about what is coming our way with universal TK. Just to give you a real brief background, in 2010, with the Kindergarten Readiness Act, that's when we had TK. And students were eligible from September 2nd to December 2nd. Those were the birth dates. So on September 2nd, they had to turn five before December 2nd. And so that's about a third of the students that are in that age group that would qualify for TK. When they passed it, there was no mandated curriculum. They did rely on the preschool foundations and frameworks as part of the basis for the curriculum. And really, the local education agencies or the districts were really allowed a lot of flexibility on what they provided for the TK, as well as if we did combination classes or some school districts chose to combine TK with their California State Preschool Program, which is the CSPP. So there were a lot of different ways that districts implemented TK. Just to give you a little snapshot of what TK looks like right now, our kindergarten enrollment is 1,114. TK is 178 right now. This is a little, you know, it's lower than it normally is. I think in 2019, or 2019, 2020, the, the numbers were 283. So it was, it's quite a bit lower. And then our preschool numbers for just the four-year-olds, because we do serve three and four-year-olds in preschool, it is 268. So we, right now, in Newport Mesa, we have only three standalone TK classrooms. The rest are a combination TK and kindergarten. And, and we have adopted various curriculum. Big Day being for the, it's Big Day for preschool. It's our, our ELA version or the early literacy skills. We've also have the preschool version of Bridges in our preschool, in our TK classrooms. And knowing how important fine motor skills are, we have adopted handwriting without tears for both the TK and the preschool. And then obviously, second step is a great, we use that tool all the time for our social, emotional learning and teaching our students those learning-to-learn skills. And so in 2021, there was legislation, the state of California, ed code and some budget things that were passed. There's updates and it chants, you know, once in a lifetime, we're going to have a 14th grade in public education. You know, if you think about it, kindergarten was first established as a, a grade level, so to speak, in 1891. So we haven't added a grade level since then. So here we are. So, you know, we're expanding this year as a planning phase. So we're just going to give you some information on what we know so far and how we're going to be planning. And by 25, 26, we will be expanding to all four-year-olds. Some other things that are kind of unique is that the maximum class size for TK will be 24 students. And there will be a ratio next year of 1 to 12, which means if you have 24 students, more, most likely will have a teacher as well as an aide in the classroom, or that's what, one of the staffing models we're looking at. And then beginning in August of 2023, our TK teachers must have 24 early childhood education units. So they must have some sort of background in early childhood and developmentally appropriate practice. And so this is kind of a rollout for you, a, a chart to show you that again, this year is a planning year. And then next year, we'll be rolling it out from September 2nd to February 2nd, with the ratio being 1 to 12 and the class size being 24. In the subsequent years, you'll notice it says 1 to 10 with a little asterisk. And that's based on funding. That's what they've kind of rolled out in the legislation that based on funding, if they don't have the funding, it will stay at 1 to 12. But if they do, it will be 1 to 10. And then the eligibility at that point expands from, to Sept, from September 2nd to April 2nd. And then 20, 24, 25, it goes to June 2nd. Then full implementation will be in 2025, 2026. And you'll notice I put in there the, we will continue to be offering our California State Preschool Program. One of the tenants of the bill is that parents will have a choice. So if they would like to attend preschool, they may attend preschool. And, or if they would like to go to TK, that is also an option for them. So that'll be interesting when we roll it out to see how many parents choose to have our preschool. And just a reminder, we do have part-day preschool for income eligibility. But we also have full-day, full-year in which they go all day and they go 246 days. So they're, you know, for those parents that are working or they're going to school or looking for jobs, that is an, an opportunity for them, so. And we do have a 1 to 8 ratio in our state preschool program. So in every classroom, we have one teacher with two aides. As you know, this is going to be a, a huge undertaking for our district, as well as other districts in the state. And so we have really pulled together a cross-functional team of all of the departments because it is going to affect every aspect of our district. And we want everyone to have input, you know, from IT to nutrition services, from business services, ed services, everyone involved. And we're going to be starting to meet with the whole group and then meet into subcommittees to do some subcommittee work as well. So one of the things we're looking, Dr. Sir and I have been going out to elementary sites, looking at maps, looking at what our facilities right now have. What are our TK, our kindergarten facilities? Also, what do we have on our campuses as it relates to early childhood? Because as you know, we do have our state programs and we have four tuition sites. So we're at half of the elementary sites. So we're, you know, 12 sites. Plus, we have a head start over at the Ray camp, Ray Campus. So we're looking at bathrooms and facilities, working really closely with ARA and MNO to really look at what is needed to be able to expand TK. And we're looking at our trends, there's a lot to look at. Also, we're going to have to start looking at the staffing because as I mentioned, the TK teachers are going to have to have ECE units. But in addition, we want to encourage our ECE teachers, our current preschool teachers, many of them have bachelor degrees, many of them have multiple subject credential, but they love the age of preschool, so they work in the preschool setting. So what kind of opportunities? The state will be rolling out some sort of pathway for our preschool teachers to see what they, you know, is, if they would be able to get a credential to teach. But we don't know what that looks like at this point. Also, communication is going to be essential in this. Um, also, communication is going to be essential in this because we need to get the word out. So we, I'm working closely with Annette at the Public Information Office. We're gonna have web, um, flyers and the social media and our website. Working with school sites that we're gonna be posting their kindergarten orientation meetings on our website so that private preschools, as well as the community, have those dates so they can attend and get more information. And, um, we're going to be encouraging and giving them talking points, uh, about Universal TK so they can put that in their newsletters and that, you know, as you know, a lot of people read what's coming from the school sites. And so this is another good way to, to get the information out. And I wo- work very closely with local preschools, as well as have a partnership with HOG. So we'll be using those, uh, relationships to also get the word out. So just, if there's any questions.
Justine Matway.
There will always be questions. The one-to-ten mandate, if there's funding, that's state funding. If the state has enough money, they're gonna say, we now have to have one-to-ten. Regardless of whether they don't care. Okay, just checking for that. Um, the time, the timeframe, does it parallel what we're doing now? So in other words, our TKs parallel whatever kindergarten class timeframe is on their campus.
Correct.
So that will continue most likely unless.
That is one of the things we're looking at.
Okay. And the other thing is, do TK facilities have to match pre-K or K?
It's Title V for kindergarten.
Nice. That's very helpful.
Yeah.
That's huge.
That's huge. I mean, that's millions and millions and millions of dollars of good news. Okay, those were my three questions. I'm excited about this. When I first became a principal, I said we should probably be looking at this. I said, four-year-olds need to be at school because we've co-opted kindergarten as a, almost pre-first grade. So all those wonderful social skills and getting along and playing is, and all the great things you're doing, they, there's, they need it. And so I'm, I'm excited that it's happening, but it's really scary. And it's, it's big, exciting, scary. So, thank you for a really good start.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes, thank you. This is exciting. It's, um.
Missed it by this much.
I know, man. You saved me some money a couple years ago. Um, this is great. Uh, one thing I have to, I have a question. Um, are these at all sites? So do we have to provide this at every elementary school?
So right now, we're looking at all our facilities and we're going to be, you know, working with maintenance and facilities to come up with a plan as, as well as business services. So have not decided what the, it will look like, but we're looking at that, yes.
Okay, well, it'd be, I mean, I guess you have to decide if it's based on demand in certain locations and those types of stuff.
Only need twenty-four kids.
Or you could have a center.
Yeah, it's true. Um, and then funding, I know the last time we talked about this, that basic aid districts were excluded from the funding for Universal TK. How, I don't know where that's coming from now. So I just wanted to understand where we are with the state providing us.
They say we have to have it, but where, are we getting the money? She's looking at you, Mr. Trump.
That would be an unfunded mandate for us.
Oh, wow.
Uh-huh.
Oh, boy.
And what do we expect this to cost over the course of, I mean, rolling out year, you know, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, then, then going to full force and what was it, twenty-five, twenty-six? Do we know?
More than we would like.
Yeah.
Can- candidly, we, we don't know because it depends on participation rates and those kinds of things and how it's set up, so.
Once people find out what a good program we do.
I'm just trying to think as, as a board, as we can advocate.
At the state level?
At the state level for, you know, providing funding that we, we would desperately need because we don't want to cut any other program. This is just a great opportunity to provide more programs and get people, um, have six, uh, students to have success down the road in school, um, which is very important these days with more of an academic kindergarten going on, so.
Trustee Matway, you're the CSPA rep for us. Um, is that one of their lobbyist sort of thing they can do for us?
It's a, it's a very, it's a very fine line of lobbying because as we've heard before, when things come up like this, the state doesn't help us a lot. In fact, our, and not us Newport Mesa, us basic funded, basic aid, community-funded school districts. We're kind of skating under the wire. We don't want to be right out in the front saying, hey, you need to help us because they'll say, well, hey, you've got more money anyway. So it's, it's, if we become EDI, we already, CSPA already did lobby. We, and our, we have a legal alliance, I believe, or, or with, um, basic aid districts. And they lobbied for this to be a separate funding source so that it didn't, it was, we would be held harmless. Uh, we would get bodies for kids and it would be like preschool, so it's extra funding. But that obviously didn't happen yet. We, it still could. They could change their minds. I mean, we could have another windfall year and everybody's, and next year's an election year, so that could be, could helpful. But right now, um, it was proposed, it was lobbied for, and it was just sort of ignored. And it's tough because the more we put ourselves in this spotlight, the more other districts, which are way more numerous than us, are going to say, hey, wait, why do they get that much money? So we have to be careful with that.
Okay. Trustee Anderson, and then Trustee Crane.
Oh, sure, thanks. Um, thank you. I'm very excited about this. I was wonder, yeah, my, my very first, um, teaching job was actually in a TK class. Um, I was wondering about the community communication plan. What is the timeline for that? When, like, is that, like, way later on? I know that plan's going in June.
We're planning on getting information out within the next month or two.
Oh, that soon? Okay.
January by the latest because we do have some of the early, um, transfers and we're very cognizant of timelines for next school year, so we want to make sure everyone's aware.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Trustee Crane.
Yeah, so I'm thinking of that slide that says, that number, I think it was slide six, that said UTK Cross-Functional Team. So basically, this is going to affect every single department in our multi-level organization. And, um, I do notice that we do have on the consent calendar, twenty-eight-four, which is, uh, and a, to approve an agreement with a consulting firm for professional consulting services for preschool, transitional kindergarten, and full-day kindergarten. Is that at all related to, um, us looking into that? Um, Mr. Holcomb?
It, it's related to the state, uh, Facilities Grant Program. That consultant is an expert in participating in the state Facilities Grant Program. So that's why that's there, uh, for us, uh, tonight is to, uh, have their expertise in helping us to make sure that we fill out all of the, the right paperwork to do the best we can in recovering funds.
So that's comforting to know. Thank you. Um, so is it possible to, whenever the consultants come back with some, some sort of report that we, the board gets to have a, um, a, um, presentation on it? I'm guessing it would be in the new year, January or so? I mean, do you know the timeline, how long that it's gonna take them to sort of, uh, consult and analyze and digest?
Ms. Resti is here this evening. She's been going to a lot of meetings, uh, about this because, as you know, uh, this legislation came about very quickly. Uh, there's a lot of conversations happening in Sacramento, uh, about funding for the program and how it will work. And so, uh, I, I don't know that there'll be something, uh, imminently, but, uh, there certainly is going to be a, a good time to come back and to wrap it all up and say, this is what we now understand. But Ms. Resti can give you more.
Hi, good evening, President Yelsey, uh, board members, uh, Superintendent Smith, everybody else. Hi, good evening.
Pull the, pull the, pull the mic down.
Oh, there you go, person.
I'm short, Miss Tal. This is what happens. We presented together, actually, at a cash conference, which is Coalition for Adequate School Housing, which they lobby for funding for facilities. So Kathleen and I participated in that, and we've been very active in staying up on, um, just all the next steps. So the consultant's, uh, contract, this is a consultant that we use for our typical every-year eligibility for modernization and new construction. We had this special agreement developed specific to any new facilities or modifications that would be required with TK. So as part of this, um, exercise, we're looking at how all of our sites are currently utilized, what we consider required program or protected spaces, non-protected. And then let's just, we have the example that, I didn't have enough completed to show you a diagram yet. Um, but if you're just taking a sample site at Adams Elementary School, we expect that we would need three classrooms of additional K, TK, to make them all Title V compliant. So what does that look like? Do we remove relocatable classrooms and start building permanent classrooms of thirteen fifty square foot, which complies with Title V? So depending on the decisions that are made of how we implement the program at each site, there could be a variety of funding opportunities at those sites based on what we end up doing to the buildings. So this consultant's gonna help us, but there are a lot of hard decisions we're all gonna have to make about what's protected and how many, you know, staff lounges do we allow in classrooms, those type of things. So we, we've just started working on that. Um, but we've put a lot of work into it. Kathleen has been tremendously supportive. Uh, her team has been great. And getting the group of operations and the education side together, working on this from the very beginning, we're gonna have a successful project.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Good thing you had all that practice, Kathleen, during COVID of bringing all the teams together.
That's right.
Perfect.
Two point oh.
Hi, um, it's so early. Have you thought about how we will tie this to EDI data and, um, look at that going forward?
Yes, uh, thank you.
And I'll say, I always hate it when people do acronyms, so Early Developmental Index.
Index, yes. Um, yes, right now, it'll, you'll be interested to know that this is a year that we are doing the, that we are doing the EDI. And so we will be doing that on all, at all of our elementary sites. So it'll be interesting to see the data that, you know, our incoming kindergarteners and what it looks like as far as kindergarten readiness since we've had COVID and it'll, you know, I'm just curious. And so then, of course, we're gonna use that data moving forward. We always use that data, looking back, what can we do in the community, what can we do in our preschools to make sure kids are kindergarten-ready, but also looking forward. What are we gonna be having to do more in kindergarten, first grade, to kind of make up for those developmental delays?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just want to thank you. You have assembled a really great team around you. And someone mentioned, does it include every department? Yeah, it does include every department. And I know they've all been working hard, and I've also heard that it's gonna cost a lot of money regardless of what we do. So I'm sure everybody wants reports. I'm sure we'll be kept up to date in terms of just spending alone of what needs to be done. But thank you. It's really, it's really exciting.
Yes.
That we're bringing this in.
And I did neglect to say that Ara Kurt and I have been working since August on this. And so it is something that we're on top of. So I just want to assure you. So, thanks.
And a great team to do it.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All second.
Matway, um, we have a comment from, uh, Trustee Ursulou, who is.
Ursulou.
On not to pull something. I think she just wants to comment on an item. So Bob, could we go to Trustee Ursulou?
Hi, um, thank you. I just wanted to comment. Can you hear me okay? Okay, um, I just wanted to comment and just, um, share with folks in case they missed it. In the item that is being approved tonight, in the consent calendar, there is actually a speech and debate program that's going to be started at T-Winkle. So to highlight what our earlier speaker was concerned with, and I know we all are trying to schedule that, um, study session for T-Winkle as soon as possible. But I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that, um, Spanish has already been added at T-Winkle as an after-school program. And this, um, consent calendar right now is going to add a really great speech and debate program over at T-Winkle. And I just also wanted to add that, um, I wanted to thank staff for their diligence in getting the J-Store research, um, database available to our Estancia kids as well. It had been approved for CDM, and now after tonight, it will be available for Estancia and all the other high schools as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and I think that's great to highlight what's happening at T-Winkle, which just brings into mind also the study session that it keeps coming up and coming up. And the district staff is working on it. We just don't.
Have any days?
Have it, no, well, we just don't have it without adequate preparation. It will be happening within the next couple of months. I mean, we're getting into December, so it will be happening. Just for clarification. Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Matway, seconded by Trustee Barto. Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matway?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
And feel better. Um, discussion action. Twenty-one A, approved secondary textbook adoption. Ms. Torres.
Um, yes, so you had seen this.
I know. I'd like to invite our student board member up so she can be part of our vote.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yes. Oh, she gets to come up to the mic.
Um, this agenda item, uh, was brought forward, um, last time for review, but this is for our AP English, uh, program. And so this was not like a regular full textbook adoption, but this is for one particular course. So moving forward, our, uh, teachers who teach this course will be using this text, um, as they go to purchase new textbooks.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Um, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Matway. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Katie Barnes?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matway?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Twenty-one B, approved ratification of increase to substitu- substitute teacher compensation. Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. Um, we've heard several speakers talk about substitutes tonight. Um, it's been a long time since that's happened. And I really do appreciate, um, the comments from our NMFT President Sarah Altwater, truly understanding what the situation is, and we are listening. Uh, we have followed, um, substitute teachers and filling those positions for years. This is not new for us of tracking it. Uh, and we have implemented things over the last five years that have really been helpful in terms of filling positions. We provide training for our substitutes, which is somewhat unique. Um, we do orientations. We recruit regularly. Um, just last year, you might recall, in January, we increased the daily rate, added a tiered, uh, long-term rate, um, of after the tenth day and then also after the thirtieth day. We continue to, um, train our folks and invest in them. And so tonight, what we are bringing forward is as we look to remain competitive, we found that in late September, October, other districts around us were increasing their daily rates. Um, we were up in the top four. We were very excited about that last January. Um, but in the last, as I said, recently, other districts have increased their rate of pay. And so what you have on the item today is that increasing our daily rate to a hundred and seventy-five dollars from the hundred and thirty-five that it was at that first tier, uh, increasing that to one eighty-five. And then at the, um, thirty days or more, it, two hundred and twenty dol- sorry, two hundred dollars a day. And we believe that this will recognize the work of our substitutes. It will maintain those that we invest in, in terms of training and whatnot, uh, and keep us competitive. These rates will put us in the top three within our competitive unified school districts. Um, it's hard, though, I, I will say, when you're looking at what makes you competitive with the rates because not everyone has a tiered. And those who do, those who do, it's not the same tiered. So we look at it in, uh, in totalistic perspective and come up with those rates, which we believe are reasonable, um, are, will be welcomed by our substitutes for already hearing from them. And so we ask that you approve the ratification.
Okay, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And then I'd just like to make a comment. Um, Student Board Member Barnes, this one is just a vote for the, okay, for the, um, regular board members because it's a personnel matter. Thank you.
I want to make a quick comment. I also wanted to add, not only is it gonna make our current subs ready and, uh, happy and also bring in new subs, it's also going to support our teachers who are having to fill in for others and use their preps and all that. So I think that's just a, a nice win-win all, all around.
Correct. And it also, um, so when our current teachers do not receive their conference time or they do not receive their report card days due to a lack of sub, they get the daily rate.
Sounds good. Okay, we have a motion to approve by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
21C, approved meeting date change from December 7, 2021 to December 14, 2021, and setting of the Board of Education annual organizational meeting. I know this is confusing to some people who think we were coming back in a couple of weeks, but Dr. Smith, would you like to explain?
Yeah, so ed code prescribes a 15-day window, and you have to have this organizational meeting. So the board doesn't have that information because the county hasn't provided it, and you set your calendar. So you set it like you normally would. Well, they picked a different window. So we need to move the board meetings so that organizational meeting is within that 15-day window as required by ed code. So that would be a motion to move it from the 7th to the 14th, which puts us in that window. We also have an obligation to notice the public the considerations for committee participation by the trustees. And there are required committees they have to participate in. And then there are some optional ones as well. And so because we have to notice the public about those considerations, we're asking you tonight to do two things, to entertain moving the meeting from the 7th to the 14th, and editing, if it needs to be edited, this list that you have of optional committee meetings so that we can then reflect the accurate committee meetings to the public in preparation for that meeting during the window.
So will we review these committees before the 14th? Now.
You've seen them in advance as far as are these the ones we want to have. But yes, during that meeting, we'll have the consideration for who and all of that. Tonight, we just want to make sure, because Rosie has to do the work of noticing the public that we're having the conversation about the who, we just want to make sure that it's the right list of committees. So it's the date, and are these the committee, you know, meetings that we attend? For example, if there's a committee that one of you sits on that no longer meets, you're fine to say, we should strike this one because that committee no longer meets.
Okay, so. Do we need to move and second and then talk?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve a meeting date change from December 7, 2021 to December 14, 2021, and setting a Board of Education annual organizational meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, now we talk.
So I do see one that I, there's one, so first sheet, blue on top, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, nominating county committee on school district organization. What is, what is that?
That was me.
Does that, do we meet? Does that meet?
No. Once a year, the county has an election and a nomination for a committee. And certain zones, certain areas, certain county areas are up and have to be voted on. Okay? And I laughed because I just attended this for the first time last time, and there is no meeting. There's just an election. So you get a ballot and you get to vote and
So does it stay on this?
Yes, because we need to have it. It's a mandated thing we need to have. I know, I was the first time on it.
Coastline ROP has a meeting in December 13th. That was moved. But then the rest of the dates are determined for upcoming in December.
Trustee Anderson has
Is that it?
Oh, lots of them.
Trustee Anderson.
Everyone had their heads out, so I thought you were ready. There is one that I recently noticed, and I talked to trustee Wagen about this. The Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce actually has an education committee. I don't know.
They don't anymore.
Oh, they don't?
They used to, but they don't. They haven't had it for about five years.
It's still on their website.
Yeah, and they don't
Their new website.
They don't meet.
They don't meet.
Oh, okay.
I know, I was on there, and they stopped meeting.
It was a great committee, and then the people who ran it left, and they just never restarted it.
Okay, well, I mean, similarly, Costa Mesa is right, we haven't met in quite a while.
We only meet typically.
Before the awards.
Before the awards. It has, it has tried to expand to do more, the Costa Mesa Education, Chamber of Commerce Education Committee, but it's dependent upon who's chairing the chamber.
Yes.
And so, but it does, it will, they'll call us again starting in January, February, come back and help for the Les Miller Awards. I have a, my questions were, if we currently, is this the meeting where, if we currently have two people on there and we'd like to change it to three, is this the meeting to do that, or is that when we just sign up for them?
I think it's the organizational meeting.
Pardon me? Okay, perfect.
We'll get, we'll get all these committees at our next meeting.
Update the list.
And people in advance can put what they
Right, right. I know that's when we do it, but I wanted to make sure. And then I had another question, because some of us sit on meetings, and it wasn't something that was part of this. And we were asked to be, you know, would you come? Would you mind coming to the meeting? And I, I know I personally, I know you have been, and I personally was asked to be at a meeting, never even gave it a thought that it was something that we should include. So what I was thinking is maybe we could just send a quick email to either you as president or you, Rosie, and Dr. Smith, and say, hi, by the way, I attend this meeting. It meets three times a year. And just so that if it's something, it, sometimes we're asked to be on a meeting because of who we are or what we know, rather than it's offered to everyone on the board. So I didn't know how to handle that, and I kind of felt uncomfortable a little bit with it, but I enjoy going to the meeting.
Historically, we only had required meetings on here. And then added, pardon?
No, it's good. They laughing how I say, I like going to the meetings. It was really fun, but it's like, am I doing something wrong?
I think we all go to meetings that, you know.
Okay, okay.
I don't think every meeting
Okay, good, thank you. Perfect, I just didn't ever want to
Has to be voted on that you go to that, Charles.
That, thank you. I just want
You're absolutely welcome to go to any meeting.
Oh, thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, somebody does it, well, somebody could do it anyway, say, how could you possibly be doing this?
So, okay, can we vote?
Thank you. Yes, I'm ready. I'm done talking, sort of.
Okay, any other comments on this? All right, we have a motion by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wagen, to approve the meeting date change from December 7 to December 14, and to set the Board of Education annual organizational meeting then. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Katie Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
I'll be here, if you're bored.
In case someone comes out. Okay, 21D, first reading and adoption of modification to board policy.
So just to complement the board and to follow up on something I said earlier, it's an observation I've made working around the state. I've found not as many boards as I've seen here wanting to listen to folks and make adjustments because they do want to hear what people have to say. And so our board policy review team met to look at this, reviewed these changes, moving from 20 minutes total to 20 minutes per item. Trustee Anderson made that recommendation fact when some of our parents couldn't speak on their topic because the time was consumed. So again, the board has looked at this, the committee has looked at it and reviewed it, and you have that language adjustment there in front of you.
Okay, does anybody, well, first, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
Then I'll second.
And are there any comments about the changes?
Is this, this is going to amend what we say as our, what our clerk says before. Do we want to add the By Order of the Brown Act to our little script?
Yes, we talked about that in committee, and we asked if that could be included because we felt that it was much more clarifying to the public. And when they speak to us and we don't answer them, we don't want any misunderstanding that we're ignoring them or just sitting here like wax people, that we are not allowed to comment on non-agenda items. So yes, we asked that that would be included, and it went
And we used to have that.
We did, and it went away.
I think we tried to shorten what is read, but
Right, but
It should be in there.
It should be in there, yes. And, and Yes.
And will be.
And will be.
If you vote on it.
If we pass this.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yep, great.
Any other questions? Okay, it was moved by trustee Anderson, seconded by trustee Barto. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Katie Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Can I amend the motion? Ooh, 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 we voted on it. Well, we should have moved to waive the second reading, because it was the first reading. If we all vote on it, why can't we do that?
Well, wasn't it move and approve? It wasn't move.
It says first reading and adoption, so we basically, intrinsically moved to waive the second reading. Okay, good, I was just
Unanimous.
Thank you, yes.
If we can please post this in the back, I think it would be helpful.
Yes?
Yes, because I think a lot of people, particularly if they're coming for the first time, are not going to go to our Bylaws. So I think if we have this posted in the back, it would be, or even copies too.
Have some copies to people.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, great idea. We also thought we might want to tweak
The comment.
The comment card just a little bit. But we will not make Rosie do that all by herself. We'll figure out, we can play with it.
Does tweaking the comment card require us to do like a board policy
Nothing has ever happened, no, it's just a clerical thing.
Administrative, okay.
Yeah.
I was going to mention that districts that I know of give these to folks that are going to make comments in Spanish and English or any other language represented in the district where the folks are anticipated to be speaking. So this could be, to your point, provided to folks as they come in, so they have it in front of them.
That'd be great, a good idea.
All these good ideas.
Okay, 21E, approved service agreement with Cooperative Strategies LLC for demographic analysis and census mapping services for Board of Trustees area boundary redistricting. Mr. Holcomb.
As you note in the background for the item itself, with each census, each decennial, I'm not sure I know
10 years.
Every 10 years, thank you, Ms. Matoye. National census, every census. The Education Code 50119.5 requires that there be an evaluation of the representation of each of the trustee areas to make sure that they're representing roughly equivalent populations. And so with the publication of that information at the end of September, we now have to have a decision on that by March 1st. And so we put out an RFP this summer for a firm who specializes in this work. There were 15 firms that were interested in it, three of them proposed, and the recommended firm is attached to this item tonight. This is something that's not done, except every 10 years typically. This district did it actually only a few years ago, back in 2018. And so we issued an RFP this time to the types of firms that do that to get their interest and their expertise. Do you have any questions?
I move to approve the service agreement with
Oh, did someone have questions? Oh, there's two, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, but we can get a motion.
Yeah, you can motion, okay.
I move to approve the service agreement with Cooperative Strategies LLC for demographic analysis and census mapping services for Board of Trustees area boundary redistricting.
Second.
Okay, we have a few questions. Trustee Anderson. I couldn't tell who was first. Trustee Wagen was first?
Yeah, I wanted to know, out of the three proposed firms that we looked at that proposed for this, why did we select the one that we did?
So there were three firms that proposed on this, and one of them, their fee was very, very high in comparison to the other firms. They have significant expertise, they do a lot of work with cities on this, but their fee, as I say, was significantly higher. Then there were two other firms, one of whom is a firm that our legal counsel has worked with in the past. They were relatively close in price. This one actually is the lowest price of the firms. But on that basis, it appeared to be the best fit for our district.
And are we bound to take the lowest price on these?
We are not bound to take the lowest price.
Okay. And besides price, what did we have budgeted to spend on this?
Well, that actually is an interesting question, because since it's not done that regularly, the sense of what it was going to cost really was something that when we got the proposals, we were actually quite surprised to see such a variation in the fees. And so that then elicited the conversation of full understanding and background and qualifications of the firm. Did they understand the work? Could they be successful in this? And since the district's general, firm that does general counsel work for our district here has worked with this particular firm and had successful experience, that validated the selection of this firm.
So this firm has, that were proposed, they've done work with other school districts?
Yes, they have.
Can you tell us those school districts?
I don't know all of those other districts, I'm sorry. I can find that information out.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is that I think one of the firms that was proposed is also being used by the city of Newport, and they might have been more expensive. However, they are very good at knowing the area anyways. And what I've been told, and this is my first time redistricting things, I haven't been in this seat before, is that you want to take the company that has the most experience in this area. And so, you know, I guess my concern is on this one. It doesn't necessarily meet, I don't know if it would have even been in any cities three proposed that they would have gotten or nor would they have voted on it. So I guess I'm a little uneasy with this company, particularly that it is so cheap and that's not their core competency. So that's my comments.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Excellent questions. I had a few of those too. I, one of the concerns that I have is, in looking at their website, this is not a service that they offer. They do some things that we would really love, like facilities master plans. And they redistrict and realign student attendance boundaries. It's not explicitly stated anywhere on their website that they do redistricting for governmental entities. And so I share the concern that just because they were the most affordable, doesn't mean that they're the best. And so I think having the experience last time of being on the redistricting committee, which is how I got involved with School Board Matters and the conundrums that happened last time, and we're not using that firm again. I, I would like to see somebody in this role, a firm in this role that has deep experience. So I'm concerned, particularly when, I would like to see other districts and know about the other districts and hear their experiences before we approve it. I know that time is sensitive, so it would have to be at the next board meeting.
Trustee Ursulou has a question.
Hi, yes, thank you. I have some similar concerns that have been raised. For me, looking at, and it is, Mr. Holcomb was kind enough to send me an email with For me, looking at, and it is, Mr. Holcomb was kind enough to send me an email with the five other school districts that they've done this work for. So they have some K through 12 references, they've done it in five districts, Conejo Valley, Corona Norco, Moore Park, Davis, and Santa Rosa. And those were their K-12 references. I don't know if of those five, that was for redistricting or for other items. But when I saw the list of five, I had concerns, because on their website, they have a list, they say that they've done over 300 facilities master plans. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
And so when you've done 300 facilities master plans, but you've done five of the redistricting, that gives me a little pause. But I'm more curious about our outreach process, because I know that Planet Bids, Planet Bids is really great, but it's not the most robust system for these niche kind of consultants that we need for projects like this. So I was excited to know that it got sent out to NDC, which as trustee Wagen mentioned, is one of the big firms that does this. But the other two big firms that do this work locally, you know, are redistricting partners and ARDA demographics. And so I'm curious why it got sent out to just NDC, but not these other two big redistricting-focused firms. And, but at the same time, I'm concerned, because I know we're now, we've put ourselves in this time crunch to get it done by March. I don't even know if it's plausible to reissue a bid and send it to these targeted consultants who do this as their full primary line of work. But I, I do share the similar concerns that have been raised.
I, I could respond to that with, this was, this is one of the reasons why we did the RFP outreach this summer, was to try to cast as broad a net as we possibly could to firms who were interested in this. Since that conversation and those specific firms were mentioned, we went to look to see if they're in the registered, not our district. So Planet Bids, we have firms that register specifically with our district. Then everybody else, you know, in other jurisdictions who also uses Planet Bids has people registered. So then they use everybody for everybody. Does that make sense? So, so they, they, they broadcast out to all firms in all jurisdictions who have registered with anyone else, including cities, for the type of work that's listed there, specifically an SAIC code, which is the code that says the type of service that's being requested, the type of professional service. And so we, we looked and saw that, in fact, the first firm that trustee Ursula mentioned is in fact listed with that service, and has responded to some other cities, to some other cities didn't respond to their proposals. So we don't know for sure whether or not they received ours, but we know that they were registered in that particular discipline with the Planet Bids. NDC was partly because after the concerns of last time, and I spoke with the district's general counsel about firms who are very expert in this, that was a firm that he was aware of. I remembered having seen this done at another district some years ago, I wasn't the staff person dealing with it, I was a consultant, but saw it and saw the presentation done at the board meeting, and said, those folks really know what they're doing. And so we, so that we would have someone who typically does a lot of city work, and some of these firms really do a lot of city work, they don't do a lot of school district work. But specifically reached out with the idea of, please know that our district is very interested in you. So we, we just let them know about it, we let them know when the RFP was coming out. Again, all to, in a very limited pool that we know, and using all of the tools we have, including the professional bidding tools that we have, to get out the word to folks as much as we could. And so we were pleased to see 15 people who had requested the RFQ or the RFP, and who proposed an interest that they may submit. We were a bit disappointed to only have three, I'd have liked to have seen, you know, six, seven, eight folks. But then when we, when we got it, we did see very high proposal and much more moderate proposals from the other two. So that's really where we came to the, the final conversation with, as I say, with counsel about this and, and his experience in this area. The likelihood, one of the reasons why this is in two pieces, don't know for sure that this is going to be the case, but since the district recently did this, on, just a few years ago, if the difference between each trustee area doesn't exceed 10%, then there isn't any necessity to actually change the boundaries. So that's why the very first portion of the fee is that evaluation. And while, again, we don't know for sure that that will be the case, you can intuit a little bit the fact that very likely that may be the case in this regard. All of those had to do with the conversation about, you know, what, what was deemed to be the best recommendation that we could offer to you this evening.
And I was going to mention that, because I, when we redid it in 2018, not everybody else in the state was redoing it, we were redoing it at the time because of a pending lawsuit.
We had done it, yeah.
We went, we went by trustee, yeah.
Right, but it was because of a pending lawsuit, so it wasn't like everybody in the state did it at that time. So I think that may play into it a little bit. And also, I, I know you corresponded with trustee Ursulo, and, and I wasn't quite clear if there were five districts that they've done, or I, I recall, I thought at Agenda Prep where you said that this firm has done, it seemed to me you said quite a few, so I assume it's more than five, or?
I, I had asked for that information from, for trustee Ursula very recently, from Mr. Geisler, our director of purchasing, and he provided those five. I don't believe any of those five are the district where our council worked with them. So many times, the consultants who prepare these RFPs, they, they list sometimes the most recent, rather than their entire list of, of former clients. I didn't review.
So you're not saying they've just done five of these redistrictings?
I would have to go back myself to look at the RFP to determine whether or not it says that, and/or contact them if it doesn't list anything that gives an impression there's more than, you know, a clearer amount.
Trustee Matoye?
Remembering back to 2018 and the fun we had with all the different district choices that we had, and in fairness, it was our naivete, we had not, at that time, redistricted since the district was formed. So that was 50 years, so there was massive changes and philosophical changes, it was just very huge. And yes, it, it has been such a much shorter amount of time, and I do believe if there are changes, they will be very subtle, it's not going to be giant blocks and boundaries of lines. What I'm, what I, my concern is, the first phase of this is, the, this, the company, it's long, so the company is going to let us know, here's the demographic changes, we're doing the research, we're looking it all up, we're going to let you know for stage one, do you need to change? And if, if we don't, we're done, we say thank you very much, here's the check for that. And then the second phase is if we do need to change. If we do need to change, how, how soon are they going to get us the information of whether we need to change or not? Because that's a really short timeline. If we, if we change firms, we won't be able to decide till December, that means they have to decide in January, and then we have two months to get the projections, to get them out to the community, to, that's a really crunched timeline. And it isn't whether we say, well, we could just take longer, because that's, that's, that's an ed code thing, so. Is there time to do all that stuff if we change? I don't, I'm, I guess it's another question, I guess it's a comment of thought.
I don't know how many other clients this firm has right now, between now and next March, but we know that they had requested to, to do this work virtually through the computer rather than in person, because they have so many clients lined up. So how many that is? I don't know for sure exactly what the schedule is with them, actually, is Ms. Reston still here? No, sorry. She has been talking with them about the scheduling of this work, so I would have to get with her and get back to you.
Does this information need to be presented, does every piece of, part of this information need to be presented at a regularly scheduled board meeting? Or can it be presented at a special board meeting?
I, I don't believe there's any reason it has to be at a regularly scheduled versus a special scheduled meeting.
Just because if we had to have extra meetings, we could, okay, thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
I already spoke to, well, I have, I have something else, but I think. I was just wondering, so we know that, we knew that census was happening, is there a reason why we didn't go out to bid earlier? If. I'm concerned about the timeline, I don't understand why we're up against this timeline now of March.
I, I do know that I've been, I had mentioned that Superintendent Lee Sung months ago, just in, yeah, in, in, in advent of what was going to be happening, so, but we were, you know, maybe distracted, I'm not, not sure, but I definitely had brought it up sooner, months ago, maybe six, seven months ago.
Yes. This, I feel like we are in a time crunch, but since especially, it may or may not impact me directly, but I, it might in 2022. So for, I would prefer to use somebody who is not booked with clients, who's not trying to do this virtually, who knows the area. I hear a lot of red flags, and it's concerning, and I would rather have a few special board meetings to get this resolved than necessarily pick the low bidder who's not super familiar with this side of work, but that's where I come on, come on this.
Can we just call for the vote?
Okay, so it sounds, since you made the motion, would you like to recommend that we let it die and then bring back?
Yes.
A recommendation?
So can I amend, is that, I amend my motion? Can I amend the motion to let this item die and we'll revisit at the next board meeting on December 14th?
Is that enough time, or do we need to have a special board meeting? Because I so do want to have another board meeting.
Okay.
So let me amend my motion to revisit this at a future board meeting.
I'd like to second that.
And we can, and.
In other words, there is no motion right now?
Right, there, yes, so we don't vote, we won't vote. Okay, so the motion is dies. All right. And we'll get back to you with a date, hopefully soon, to revisit this. Okay, informal reports, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to balance this energy and make sure that I'm not offending some with, with certain energy, because I don't want to, that's the last thing I want to do. I, I struggle not to be excited when I talk about what I've seen in the district, so for what it's worth, I'm, I'm going to be very, very energetic about our district, our students, and the folks in our communities. I, I had a chance last week to meet with some of the parents at Whittier, who came to the board meeting, and because of the way we were doing the time limits before, didn't have a chance to express their thoughts publicly save one, and there were many others who want to be a part of it. So we had a meeting in the evening, after work, when folks could be here. Quite a few parents came and brought some of their students. We went almost two hours, so they certainly weren't restricted by any time limits. We had pizza, and we, we tried to do it in, in Spanish exclusively. I had some help from a district translator, which, which was nice, but got a lot of good information and continue to work on that issue. I have meetings scheduled again this week on that same topic. So I wanted to mention that. Had a chance to meet with Project Hope Alliance, and it just reiterated for me how many folks in this community are willing to support the needs of our community. When they explained what they did with our, our families who are housing displaced, and the myriad of activities that they do, I was just, I was humbled by their, their gratitude to serve, their graciousness, and their energy to, to do this work. They, they love the folks that they are serving. Learned that Vans donated a ton of shoes, and I thought, how cool is that, that a local company is trying to help? And, and then bumped into one of our parents from Newport Harbor and, and two students who had practice, but took time away from practice to come over and work on some of the voluntary work they're doing. Are you kidding me? I mean, these students that are just in the classroom, on the athletic field, in the community, and we have this partner, and I know we have others, and so I apologize that, I, I haven't met everyone in four weeks, but I certainly met Project Hope Alliance, and, and it blew me away. And, and we're having conversations about, as we look at community supporting schools in this community school effort, what are the resources? And this is pretty cool, they've actually worked with some other districts on providing community resource around community school projects. So that, that was just inspiring in the sense that, you know, I see a real future for us, benefiting our students and our families. It was also great to meet with city manager Grace Lung, she was very, very pleasant, we talked about working together and collaborating, really, really good meeting, and, and committed to continuing this monthly meeting together, so that we keep our communities moving forward in the same direction with the same interest. And, and we do share those same interests, and I look forward to meeting with Costa Mesa City Manager as well, we're scheduling that. Speaking of folks that have a collaborative attitude, I just want to compliment CSCE and NMFT for, for their continued, you know, interest in that, working together, collaborating, let us know what's going on. And as I said before at the last meeting, we're equally committed to that, making sure that you know what's going on, and, and we'll continue to get better on our end, as I know you will as well, and I just want to thank you for that, for that energy. It's, it's the only way to do the work, quite honestly. And then the part that was really, well, before I get to that, the CDM Zone PAC was great to hear from the parents, what they're doing, and the PTAs, from the principals, and what they're doing, and what was brought up, again, was this need to kind of clarify where the district is. So as I mentioned to all of you, staff are working on an FAQ, and as soon as we have that ready, we'll provide it to you and to the community about where we are as a district, and, and it's consistent, so everybody can see that. So that was one of the, the big takeaways there, besides just having a great time meeting all of them and hearing what they're doing. But the, the part that really was heartwarming was seeing the students in action. So I had a chance to go see Show of Hands at CDM Middle School, and it was great, the puppets and, and the humor, and I thought it was the, the perfect performance for the pandemic, because the students were wearing masks, as our policy requires, and it didn't matter, because the puppets were doing all the talking, right? So I was like, this is ideal, whoever thought this up is right on point. It was, it was really, really great to see the arts and, and our students acting, singing, participating, laughing, most of all, that was great. Also had a chance to see some of our athletes performing, and there's a whole list here, but this has been a long meeting, and I don't want to read everything, because this district's doing some great stuff on the athletic fields, but I'm talking about football and water polo and cross-country, and boys and girls, girls tennis, golf. I mean, we have folks in CIF right now outperforming their ranking, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, our students are, are there, they're doing co-curricular, they're in extracurricular, and they're doing it well, and that was just great, seeing them. Anyone that's been out to one of these things, certainly our teachers and our, our classified folks know, because they're in the classroom, they're seeing these students smiling and engaged in the work. And it's also great to see them engaged in the work on our fields and in our performing arts venues, et cetera. So some of the things we were working, I'll continue to update you on those meetings I have and what I learned in the community. And in that, I had a parent hit me up at an event, no lie, and says, hey, we've been following you, Where Is Wes thing? And I said, you want to get a picture with me, you could be in it? She's like, oh, I don't know about that. So the Where Is Wes is catching on, and we'll continue to update the community, because as I said, all kidding aside, we're, we're committed, I'm committed, to listening to and learning from our constituents. If we're not listening to what they know is best for their students, then we're not really listening to the right people. So we're going to listen to them, we're going to listen to our professionals who do the work for us, we're going to listen to our staff and our, our trustees, we're going to listen, and we're going to move forward together, we're going to do the work that needs to be done together. So, again, that, my remarks for the night.
Ms. Torres.
And no comment tonight. And no comment tonight.
You're not doing this?
Yeah, we're not doing this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We took them off the agenda. That's okay.
They're on the agenda.
But you quizzed them and they did it well. No, that's.
I am sorry. And I know you do give a committee report. Trustee Anderson, did you light up again?
I did, yes. I did let it begin because I don't have a committee report yet. I'm excited for DLOC to be happening soon. And we didn't really get a chance to talk or highlight.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
We're.
There was it.
I'm talking 23.
Twenty, we have board member reports, then board member committee reports.
Right. So I'm talking under 23.
Oh, you're moving ahead. Okay. Okay.
Is that, are we not there? I thought.
That's fine.
You're good.
Well, that's why I was thinking. Okay. Well, we, we quickly went by 20B2, which was approving the 2021 school plans for student achievement. And I just wanted to highlight and commend to three of our schools particularly that are Title I schools that despite being in COVID times, despite all of the hardship, made massive gains in their ELA this year. I was just blown away to see some of that. So the staff at Ray and at Whittier and College Park did amazing, amazingly great. That's, that is, no, let me start again. The, the teachers at those schools, as all the teachers were extremely dedicated, but to see those gains at some of those schools that had some of the highest impacts for COVID that had, that are typically under-resourced in a lot of ways, to see these gains is massive. And so I just want to commend our teachers and I wanted to highlight that. Two of those schools are dual immersion schools. So there also has been concern in the past of are the kids getting to the grade levels that they, or the literacy levels that they need to. And indeed, we're seeing that that is true. So I just wanted to highlight that and thank those staff.
Good job. I like that.
Could I? I was going to say, since you started, trustee Crane, go ahead.
I wanted to piggyback on student achievement in a sense that we're, you know, data output. I know that ed services had put out a report saying that administrative interns did a data chat at the secondary schools and there was a market decrease in students receiving Ds and Fs by 25%. Okay, that's, that's, that's amazing as well. So coming off of COVID to hear that we are helping our students by 25% in a decrease in Ds and Fs is quite an achievement as well.
Did you want to add anything else?
Oh, I, sure. Yes.
It's not required as if you had anything that you felt.
This is your time.
Oh, I know. It's just, it's just been, you know, we're everywhere. We love being out there in the community. I did want to recognize and acknowledge the parents who are advocating for their students by, you know, leaving shoes in front of the, the district office or coming to our meetings. And, you know, that's democracy in action. And so I want to acknowledge their, their right to speak and for us to hear. So thank you.
Trustee Wigan?
Yeah. Thanks, Carol. I echo that last statement about them being us listening. We are and you are being heard. And so thank you for advocating for your students. One thing I just, I'm very excited. Wes had talked about our, our, our sports teams and how well that they've performed this year. And think about how, you know, a lot of them didn't, couldn't even perform fully last year and how we were now CIF champs or going to different sections of CIF. So I just really support and really, I'm impressed with our student athletes, but all of our athletes that have really come out of a tough year and made it to where they are today. So, and it's great. You can see in the community that parents and foundations and PTAs, everyone is just happy to be back in some form. And yeah, let's keep moving.
Thank you. We did, we've all been to wonderful things and it's, it's, it's really, really nice to be back in the theaters and outside of the theaters and to attending things. The Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council meets, and I want to thank Mr. Bidnick, who is still here tonight. Thank you so much because his input at this particular meeting is with our youth groups that provide all the sports that are going on. And, and he assures them that the fields will be okay, or he gives them a reason why we're working on this and that we tuned up the infield's or are tuning up the infield's at Kaiser, Mariners, Costa Mesa High School, T-Winkle and Enson. And there is concern about our, our watering systems and what's there. And there's a study that's going on right now on that. And that both pleased and, I mean, it's concerning because, oh dear, we have to have that. But we do. And the good news is we're going to do that. So that will give our kids fields when there is grass to be played on. It's still a wonder, it's still really, really good. And again, I will shout out to that committee headed by the Costa Mesa United Group. It is the most productive, is it, and respectful and focused on kids. And just so everyone knows that our athletic directors from Costa Mesa High School and Estancia High School are consistently represented there. Newport Harbor comes when they can and when they, they're not as regular, but they're welcome because Costa Mesa United, the group hits all of our students that are there, and they also attend Costa Mesa High, Newport Harbor. So that was my committee meeting that I went to that was really good.
Okay. I have a couple of things. One, I'm really excited with how well we're doing at CIF, especially Newport Harbor, because that's my zone school. Go Sailors. The women, the girls volleyball team has kind of a great underdog story. So as I've heard, they were initially not even part of the, we're going to make it to CIF and some students got jobs and they kind of moved on with things that they wanted to do. And then it's sort of like a movie. They got back into CIF and they're the underdogs and they're doing really, really well. And they're kind of all looking around going, we're not even supposed to be here. So it's kind of, it's kind of amazing to hear this story from these, these kids and these parents. I attended the Harvard Council PTA meeting and I got to hear from Kristin Henry, as Lisa Fuller mentioned. And one thing that I was so impressed by, and I see it in our students and their activities, is just their commitment to that level one, tier one mental health support. And it's great to see everyone excited to be back. It's also great to see how our counselors and mental health professionals are working with our students to, you know, make this such a nurturing environment and really head off a lot of things that could escalate. So I was really, really appreciative of those efforts, both seeing them in action and then hearing about them from Kristin Henry. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I just, I mean, we've mentioned all about CIF, but we do have one championship team right now, the Newport Harbor Water Polo, men's water polo team. They won the open division against Huntington Beach.
In Southern Section?
So, Southern Section, yes. So hopefully we've, we had a tradition before COVID of inviting teams who win CIF to our board meeting.
Yes.
And hopefully we can have them at a future meeting here.
Is that at the, the section and state level?
No, just CIF champions.
Okay. Yep.
Except Karen.
There, there's, there's.
Section champions?
They are section champions, but we have invited them, whether they're section champions or.
And that's what your question was. Yeah.
Yeah. Either, either one, but we.
Because I think a section champion is pretty cool.
I do too.
I don't get involved.
Southern section champion is a really.
May I, may I say something about that? Southern Section is the largest section of CIF in the entire state. It doesn't include San Diego and it doesn't include LA City, but it includes everything else south. So it's to the border. It's huge. So that's a big deal.
It's huge. So yes, we should put them on the agenda.
Yeah.
For an upcoming board meeting. Because it's always fun to have those athletes come in and they're student athletes and they talk about how great they are in the classroom as well as in the pool or wherever they are. And we also have some other teams still playing and other individuals still playing in certain sports. So you never know. We may, at the end of the, at the end of the month or.
And winter sports have already started. So, yeah.
And then just before we end, I too wanted to just reiterate that we appreciate parents being involved in their kids' lives, in their kids' education, in their health. And we want to hear those comments. We do have time limits and as we all approve tonight, we will extend those time limits for various topics in addition to having our own meeting to run. So we do want to do that and we do read what's given to us. And I, you know, there was one parent who said that we were mocking them. And I don't think any of us have ever mocked anyone coming to our board meeting to make a comment or outside. We, we have listened. We may not always agree and we may always not comment because we can't.
We can't.
According to Brown Act and we will read that in advance in the future. But we do want to have community input. And I know some people have gone out to individual PTA meetings to try to make some comments that probably are more appropriate to bring to our school board meetings. So we encourage anyone who has a question, an issue, a concern about something that's going on in the community, either educationally or outside, to bring it to us. We can't always solve every issue. As we've talked about, we wish we were that powerful, but we're not. So anyway, do we have any other comments or issues to bring up? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Matwaye, seconded by trustee Crane. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. We will see you in December.
Thank you.